Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for September 26, 2023. We're going to be going into executive session, so I moved at the Select Board go into executive session for the purpose of, one, approving executive session minutes, and two, discussing strategy related to two litigation matters in items two and three of the agenda. Litigation matters must be discussed in executive session because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares an executive office, an executive session therefore to be necessary. So all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John?
Aye.
John Van Scuyck.
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We will return to open session after our executive session meeting.
Thank you.
We'll go live in three, two, one.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is the meeting of the Select Board for September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. Let's start off with any announcements or updates from the Select Board. Miriam?
Thank you. I have two. For those of you who are in question at all about whether you can get your flu vaccine and your COVID vaccine at the same time, let me reassure you, yesterday I had flu here and COVID here. So please go get vaccinated. And we are, we, Brookline is actually hosting several vaccination clinics. I will send you to the Brooklyn Public Health website rather than read those to you, but please, I do encourage you to go get your vaccines. I do want to make a sad announcement. I, the, one of the Select Board Representatives Chairs of the Brooklyn Commission on Disability, and this, over this past weekend, we lost one of our members, Jim Meachack, really a wonderful human being, the longest-serving member of the committee, prior chair, honorary chair, and this was very unexpected. So I just really want to honor his memory, his commitment to the town, and the work he did for those who had to really make their way around this town in a wheelchair, which is very, can be very, very challenging. So I just, you know, if you are, if you know, if you're interested in going to service, the services are tomorrow at the Bella Odell Funeral Home, five to seven, here in Brooklyn.
Thank you. Any other updates or comments? John?
Thank you very much. And I hope this doesn't make any members of the board nervous, but there's going to be a really good discussion tomorrow night of our form of government, but also alternative forms of government. So this is the forum that is being conducted by the League of Women Voters and the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. It's the first of several forums that they hope to have on town government. The program tomorrow will feature two speakers from the UMass Boston Collins Center. They're going to give an overview of Brookline's current form of government. They're also going to discuss other forms of municipal government in comparison with ours. This forum is going to be held in the Select Board Hearing Room, right here, on the sixth floor of Town Hall, with light refreshments at six-thirty. The program will begin at seven. It will be carried on B I G, livestream, recorded. But a lot, there's been a lot of conversation, and if I haven't used the phrase charter reform, but there's been a lot of conversation in town around the question of charter reform and whether Brookline should be conducting a, a, a look at the, the, the form of government that it has and the alternative forms of government that, that it might have. And so this is in that context, and it's a great opportunity to learn more about it and to become part of the conversation about it. Thank you.
So if I may add, to supplement those conversations going on around town, the Select Board will, in the future, be soliciting from the residents of, of town, of the town, their thoughts about how our government operates. Not in lieu of any discussion of charter change or whatever, but to just supplement with data as to what people think about how the government works and are they thinking, whether there are things that we should know about that maybe can be fixed to make town government work more effectively, either as a town, or as a city, or as a whatever. But there are some universal issues that, that maybe we can, we can address. So any other comments, updates? Okay, let's move on to public comment. Devin, could you lay out the rules?
Thank you for joining us for public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you, and there are a few rules. Each person speaking tonight is limited to three minutes. You do not need to use the entire time, but you may. We encourage you to refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer, but are more likely to work with staff offline to get a more thorough answer and respond via email. We'll let you know when you've reached thirty seconds and you're then when your time is up. If you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to the board, or at the conclusion of the board's business at any given meeting, the chair can allow further public comment. The first person signed up for public comment this evening is Sana Hafiz. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Devin. Hello, my name is Sana Hafiz, and I'll be speaking in the capacity of a Brookline resident. First, I have a question for Chaz. I want to ask about the status of the ARPA investigation, as well as the present situation with your outreach to Suffolk Center for Restorative Justice regarding the mediation. As far as I know, no contact has been established to date. I also had another question for the Select Board and town admin in general. You all should have received a PDF from Devin, which includes a conversation that has been circulating within the Black and Brown community in town. The conversation is between ARPA Review Committee Member Arthur Conquest and then ARPA Grant Applicant Deborah Brown of B C D C, formerly known as B I C. If you could all please pull that up now for reference. In this conversation, ARPA Review Committee Member Arthur Conquest tells Deborah Brown, and I quote, "I told him about the $250,000 I sweetened your B I C ARPA grant with." As well as, "Legal or not, that specifically was the deal I signed up for." This may cause significant trouble for the town when the time for an audit comes regarding the mishandling and misuse of federal funds. What is going to be done about this and other backdoor conversations between ARPA committee members and grant applicants? Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Adi Ajnusi. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute, and your time will begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Devin. Good evening. Adi Ajnusi, Brookline resident, precinct four, and the lead petitioner for Warren Article nineteen. As I stated last week, I will continue to shed light on the coordinated attack to stop Warren Article nineteen and the intentional discrimination against Black and Brown community by elected officials, and specifically, a lot of them from the Brookline Equity Coalition. We can see from the document posted, these are all emails from the town meeting server from their own conversation on May twenty-second, eight days before town meeting hearing of Warren Article nineteen. These town elected officials, all white, consisting of Brookline Equity Coalition, intentionally coordinated a plan to ensure that Warren Article nineteen failed. They did this by creating a false narrative based on lies and defamation of characters of the petitions, coupled with other false allegations by B C F staffmen. If the town wants to turn a blind eye to all the discrimination that has transpired and this coordinated effort by town meeting members belonging to same circle to stop the formation of a Black and Brown commission, that's down to the town's leadership choice. I'll read some of their quotes from their emails. Not my words, yes. The creator of this newsletter now asks us to support a warrant Article nineteen to create a Black and Brown commission, which will coordinate the work of town agencies to address all Black and Brown issues with activities and programs intended to eliminate systemic racism, prejudice, and discrimination, calling stocks. That same day, Bonnie replied, "Say thank you for this calling. The language and the accusation here indicative of what has been happening over the past few years on other platforms." This is in new, if you watch the recording of Select Board meetings with public comments on Apple Project proposal and hearings on Warren Article nineteen. If you scroll down to page four, Pascal and Anania, you'll see Regina Frally stating, "I saw him in aggressive insulting actions weeks ago at the Select Board," and to quote Cheagre, "You are supposed to persuade us to support your warrant article. This is not the way to do it. Amen." As we can see, it's, we have a lot more documents to show the public. This is what has transpired just on May twenty-second, eight days before Warren Article nineteen was heard. So I would, excuse me.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. So I would like to know what the town plans to do about this, because there has to be accountability on what has transpired on the attack on Warren Article nineteen. We believe from our community that this has been, this is illegal, and it is discrimination against the Black and Brown community to intentionally attack the formation of a Black and Brown commission. So we just will continue to ask the question, what the town and town leadership plan to do about this? What we see as illegal activities. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public-
Excuse me, Devin. So this was on the screen. Do you have that in your computer?
It's in your OneDrive folder.
Okay.
The next person signed up for public comment is Neil Gordon. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Devin. Neil Gordon, precinct one, town meeting member, member of the advisory committee. I'm also a Brookline constable with a sworn duty to, among other things, preserve the peace. I speak in that context this evening, at least in part. So yesterday I stopped into the Busy Bee for a late breakfast, and on my way in, I passed three Brookline Traffic Enforcement Officers on break, sitting in the first booth by the door. I said hello and in my usual fashion asked, "How's business?" That simple question precipitated a fifteen-minute conversation about broken parking meters. Here's the shorter version. Too many meters are broken. Park there and you're ticketed unless you've used the phone app. Parking enforcement is pretty much a thankless job, and confrontations are not unusual. Broken meters make a thankless job more thankless and foster exactly the confrontations we wish to avoid. And of course, there are other good reasons our parking meters should function as intended. Our enforcement officers report meters that won't accept coins or credit cards. They report them repeatedly until in frustration they give up. The enforcement officers are frustrated, drivers are frustrated, and, and to the extent they're aware, the business owners are also frustrated. The officers I spoke to asked if I knew the right person to call. I suppose I do, so here I am. I'm not here to assign blame. I'm simply asking you, please, fix the problem, and thank you for your time, as always.
At this time, there are approximately ten people in person and twenty-five attending virtually. No one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, thank you, Devin. Let's move to the miscellaneous license vouchers and contracts. First, are there any corrections to the minutes for September nineteen, two thousand twenty-three? Corrections or edits? No? Therefore, I move approval of the minutes for September nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Second, unless someone would like to discuss an item in, in particular, I move approval of items seven B through seven F that are listed and summarized on the agenda. Any desire to discuss any of those items? Seeing none, I move approval, therefore, of item seven B through seven F. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, next, going to the calendar items, noise bylaw waiver, public hearing. This is the presentation and vote on the request from Wise Construction for a noise bylaw waiver for internal construction at a building on Beacon Street, because deliveries are going to be made from September twenty-seventh through February second, two thousand twenty-four, between the hours of five AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday. Is there someone here for that? Please, please step to the mic.
Hi, my name is Chris Longo. I'm a general supervisor for Wise Construction. I'm the site supervisor for twelve eighty-five Beacon Street. We're working over the Mass General Urgent Care and the Brigham and Women's Family Care Doctors. So our problem is the family care opens at eight AM. Our only delivery spot is right over their entrance door. So any stock that we have to bring in, we, we took a window out, and we need to be done and cleaned up before eight AM in the morning. As far as noise, I, I took some decimal readings. The outside noise is basically fifty-five to sixty-three, traffic going by at sixty-five to seventy-six. When we had a delivery, basically, the, the highest I got was a ninety decimal reading when we were doing the deliveries. I don't think noise is the issue. I believe it's someone sees us there, and that's where the complaint came from, because the complaint came on a day that we didn't have a delivery. We were starting early because we couldn't make any noise inside with the hospitals open below. So we're asking for this, basically, because there's, there's no way around it. We're working the other, in that petition was working at nine at night until four in the morning on the inside of the building. And that's, that's because it's the only time we could work downstairs to run the drains and plumbing in the ceiling above. I had the full crew there today. I went outside with the decimal meter. I did it before everybody showed up. I did it after everybody was cutting. You couldn't hear anything outside, literally, couldn't hear anything outside. I had them cut the saws with the metal studs, which came into a ninety decimal inside, and you could not hear it outside. So I don't think it's a noise thing. I think it's more, people see us working.
Does it sound like that?
Yes. It's wider than that.
That's thirty decibels, right?
Did you plant, did you plant that?
We, we have, we bought the two parking spots out front. We have them closed off, you know, from, from the morning until eight o'clock at night, so we're not obstructing traffic with the deliveries. We call for a police detail every time we have a delivery. We're trying to do the right thing, and we just, it, it's impossible for me to work at, starting at seven, when they open their doors at eight, and, and we have to be overnight to work in the hospital section of it. So that's why we're asking for the waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, thank you for, for the overview. So for the deliveries, how long do the deliveries typical, are you using the entire time, or is this multiple trucks coming in? How's it?
No, usually we have one truck in the morning, and it's, if it comes at five, he's out of there by seven.
Okay. Are you, are you shutting off the truck for the delivery?
Yes.
Shutting off the engine?
Yeah.
Okay, and you'll continue to do that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Miriam Ashkenazi?
Yes, I have two questions, sorry. The first is, Mamie, did we just receive a single complaint? Were there multiple complaints?
This is Devin Fields, Assistant Town Administrator for Operations. The building department just received a call saying that they saw someone dropping off something outside of our normal hours in the bylaw. So it wasn't a complaint?
Wasn't a complaint.
It wasn't like this is noisy. It was, we see that something is happening outside of the realm of the bylaws.
Okay. So, thank you. That's actually quite helpful. And then this, the question for you too is, this bylaw waiver, or this waiver is for the duration of the rest of the project?
Yes.
And that is?
Till above February.
What was that, sorry?
February twenty-two-four, yeah. And like I said, the deliveries are maybe one a week, and then it will slow down once we get past, you know, the heavy construction part of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chair of questions, John Van Skoyak?
I did. Thank you very much. I, I just want clarification on the sequence here, because it sounds like what happened was that there was activity that, you know, under most circumstances would be in violation of our local bylaws in terms of the hour at which it was taking place. But it wasn't until there was a complaint that it was decided, it was determined that there needed to be an application for a noise bylaw waiver for this activity. Is, is, have I described it correctly?
We did. We started at six o'clock instead of seven o'clock.
Yeah.
But we were inside the building, because we knew we weren't making any noise outside.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to jump in there. The building department received their application. They had a building, building part permit to do this work, and what often happens, especially with interior work that's not in the public way, is there's like a lot of leniency with the timing, right? Because it's not impacting. So even though they were doing work outside of the normal hours, because it was all internal work, the, the noise was not, you know, a concern. I think we, it just wasn't clear about the deliveries. You know, that wasn't something that the building department had vetted in advance.
Okay.
Became aware of the delivery time, and then Commissioner Bennett said the only authority you can get to do these deliveries outside of this time is through the Select Board, so you need to go through the noise bylaw waiver process, even though it's not an issue of noise that we're concerned about.
Yeah, I get it. And, and, and that addresses the concern I had. Yeah, I get it. And, and, and that addresses the concern I had. Thanks.
Uh, Mike Sandman?
I, I just wondered about the five o'clock. You mentioned that you start at six. Uh, do you really need five o'clock as a?
The, the only reason, uh, we, most of our deliveries will be at six, but when we take a big delivery, like a sheet rock delivery. Um, I just need to be sure that we're not over the door at eight o'clock because that's when basically seven thirty, the nurses start coming in and everything. I just. I, I don't want to hinder their.
Yeah.
Entrance to the building.
Okay. The one, uh, thing that I think really drives neighbors nuts is backup points.
Yeah.
Um, at, at, at five and six o'clock in the morning, that, that really drives people up the wall. So, I mean, the extent that you can do it, get the vehicles to come in.
Yeah.
Stop, unload without a lot of jockeying back and forth. And I realize that kind of always happened, but. Um, just think about the winter time, there's snow piles and so forth. Not, not easy.
Yeah.
But that is something you try to keep an eye on that.
I'll, I'll be honest with you. We have the two spots where we have cones out and then I park my laborer parks. We usually take up the spots up the street until the delivery comes, even though it's four, five thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
And then when the delivery comes, we move out of his way. So he comes up Beacon Street.
All right, good.
And pulls right in. So we do try. I, I, I agree with you with the backup. We try to minimize that as much as we can.
Some people would rather be run over than hear the back.
Hey, um, this is a public hearing unless the select board has any further questions, um, like open the public hearing and.
Thank you.
If there's any comment.
At this time, there are twenty-seven virtual attendees and about five in person. No one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, we'll wait a couple of seconds. Okay, hearing no. Uh, indication that people want to make a comment. I'll close the hearing and. Um, I move approval of the noise by law waiver, uh, for Wise Construction Company. Um, with respect to work at twelve eighty-five Beacon Street. From September twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three through February second, two thousand twenty-four. Between the hours of five AM to nine PM, Monday through Saturday. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Ben Skoyak?
Aye.
Maryam Ashkenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. Next, comprehensive pa- plan requests for proposals. Uh, presentation from, did you say?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you.
I just said, oh yes, because I have questions.
Okay.
Good evening.
Let me at least introduce them first, okay? Hmm, okay. Uh, presentation from the planning department and discussion of the comprehensive plan requests for proposals. Um. Um, Ms. Bruton.
Good evening. My name is Cara Bruton. I'm the Director of Planning for the Town of Brookline. Um, I am just here to introduce Emily DeHogue. She is the Project Manager for, um, getting the request for proposals, um, off the ground. You may not have met her yet. Um, she has been with the town for a couple of years, joined us after about five or six years in Virginia and also North Carolina. We are very pleased to have her on board and recently she got a promotion and she is now our Senior Housing Planner. So this, um, may be one of her last tasks before she moves on with her new role, but, um, I'm really excited to introduce you to Emily.
Thank you, Cara.
You're going to share your screen and then everything is queued up to go. So that shared screen has been disabled.
Right. Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, thank you, Cara, for introducing me. Um, we also have Linda Pelkey, Olson Pelkey, the Chair. Of the Planning Process Study Committee. Um, so this committee has been working on the RFP. Request for Proposals for the Comprehensive Plan for about a year since last October. And John Ben Skoyak has been on that committee. So thanks to him as well. Um, and I'm just going to touch on a few points about the comprehensive plan. I know that you guys have a full schedule tonight. Um, so we're asking from the select board, although a formal vote is not needed for the RFP, we would like to. Um, we're looking for your endorsement, um, before we move on to posting the RFP. The RFP is written with, um, the audience of consultants in mind. So everything is kind of geared towards, um, them responding. To the request. Um. And I'm going to explain a little more about that. So what is a comprehensive plan? I think a lot of you already know what that is.
Hope so.
But, um, just to refresh, it's a strategic framework that guides the future of a town. Based on the community's vision and goals. So typically comprehensive plans are fifty, fifteen to twenty years into the future. Um, looking at future land use, built environment. Um, it serves as a policy guide. And prioritizes studies, policy changes and infrastructure spending. Um, but it is not a zoning bylaw or regulation. It does lay the foundation for zoning codes. Um, and implementing the vision laid out in the comprehensive plan into future zoning. I think some of you might've been here for the last comprehensive plan. It was completed in two thousand five. So it was a while ago, um, and that was only a ten-year plan. Um, there was an update in twenty eighteen, which showed that. Um, the town departments and boards completed almost all of the recommendations in that plan. Um, but recently the town meeting has, um, had actions that demonstrated that the community is in strong support. Of having an updated, community-led comprehensive plan. So for this new plan and the RFP, um, is proposed to have a two-year timeframe. Um, the sources for funding were included in the override. And then we've also applied for potential state grant funding to supplement that. The process will be largely consultant-led, um, with limited staff capacity from Brookline. And community-driven. Um, so I'll talk more about the community engagement aspect of the proposed RFP.
Hmm.
So first off, we have engagement outreach and events. Um, the RFP outlines some mechanisms for that, but we're asking consultants to actually propose what those would be. Um, as in concrete events. But the aim is to meet people where they are in Brookline. Um, for instance, different fairs that are already attracting large groups of people. Or perhaps, uh, commercial districts that there are a lot of people already in. Um, there, we want multiple mechanisms for engagement throughout the process and then have feedback loops for. Different parts of the plan so that people can give feedback on different sections of the plan as they are written. One of the major, um, parts of the plan are the listening sessions. And so these would occur once a quarter, so every three months. And be held by the planning board and you all, the select board. Um, and this would be an opportunity for the consultants to give updates to the select board and the planning board. And also a platform for the public to comment on, um, the process of the comprehensive plan. Equity and Inclusion Approach. We're asking the consultants to propose. Procedures, tools and strategies to integrate and promote racial and economic equity. And inclusion throughout the comprehensive plan process. So this is a very important part of the plan. Um, we're having them propose an outline and then meet with. The offices of diversity, inclusion and community engagement. And then the steering group would be, sorry, I said that wrong, diversity, inclusion and community relations. And then the steering group, um, we're asking consultants to provide methodology for this group. Um, because they have a lot of experience in how, um, best to run steering groups. But we're proposing that be twelve to fifteen residents, be a smaller group. And then have a larger engagement ambassadors group. Which would have more capacity to represent the community and then li- be liaisons to their different networks through that. And this, this group would also provide guidance to consultants on engagement activities and be involved in engagement events. And again, we're asking consultants to give us more methodology on this group. Okay, so I'm going to go into the process, but first I just want to talk about. How we got to this process that's proposed in the RFP. So first, the committee looked at APA best practice plans, um. Throughout the country to see what we might want as a final product in order to get there through our RFP. Um, we also, uh, looked at the guide, American Planning Association's Sustaining Places. That lays out different principles and processes in order to produce, um, good comprehensive plans. And the co- and the commission actually, or the committee actually adopted those principles and processes into the RFP. So that's very important as well. Um, and then we also had an opportunity to both talk to different, uh, communities from this best practice plans. To hear what, how their process went, what they learned throughout the process, how we can reflect that in the RFP. And then we had a pre-proposal meeting as well. Talking to consultants about, um, with questions we had about our planning process and get feedback from them. So I'm gonna switch screens in my share. All right. So we have, I'm going to be very high level on this. Um, we have a flow chart. To help show the process laid out in the RFP, but even before the visioning phase, let me zoom in a little bit for you all. Even before the visioning phase, we have the pre-planning phase. Um, so that phase looks at challenges and opportunities through collection of data and scenario testing. Um, and then we'll have, we have proposed, have a kickoff, um, for the comprehensive plan with the public. And then we. Dive into the visioning phase first. Followed by topic-based recommendation phase. Implementation planning phase. And then the final.
Uh.
Right. The final is the adoption phase.
Phone, Regina. Oh, how's the clerk come and take it away from you? Devon?
So the adoption phase, um, we're having the select board and the planning. Um, board both vote to adopt, um. The final plan and then we submit it to the state as well. I wanted to highlight, um, again, so throughout this whole process, we have these quarterly briefings. Uh, lis- listening sessions, which will involve the select board and the planning. Board as well. So that's all I have. Where are the next steps?
Okay, uh. Uh, Cara, did you want to, want to say something?
I think it'd be great for Linda to say something really quick.
Okay. Linda, Linda Pelkey?
I hadn't planned on this, but hi there. Um, I'm Linda Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seventeen Advisory Committee. And I was the Chair of the Planning Process Study Committee. So I'm really excited to be at this point to have. Gotten the affirmation from the planning board that they voted to approve the RFP for release. Um, you know, it was really a learning process that we all went through on the committee. I think. The important part was, um, focusing on best practices. And also we had a really wonderful member of our committee, uh, Susan Podziba. Who is a public policy mediator. And she advised the committee quite well about how to do authentic community engagement. And that's really the most important piece here. Um, I think for this process to be successful for Brookline. Everybody is going to have to suspend judgment and participate in the process. And we want everyone in the community, I know this is a top order, but this really is our goal, to feel that they are represented. In this document and represented on the steering committee and through the ambassadors. And the, we've already drafted a huge list of organizations and individuals for outreach. And this, we've really stressed this with the consultants that we've heard from already. Um, Emily mentioned the pre-proposal. Meeting that we had and that was super encouraging because we had five really serious, really qualified firms come. And tell us how eager they were to work in Brookline and how excited they were that we're undertaking this process. So I hope that you folks embrace this and, uh, you know, see it as an important step for the town. I think, um, you know, when we finally get to the point of wanting to do big things in Brookline, we're going to need to have gone through this. Community dialogue and it's really bringing everyone along as we learn and grow together. And I hope that's how it works out. So we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Um, I think Paul is first.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, so I'm hoping that we can go back. Um, if you could roll the slides back a minute. I want to go back to the steering group for a minute. I have two questions, one about the steering group. And then one, one about the next step. And this, this has to do with governance of the project and I'm, I, I may ask Chaz for some input here and also Cara, but there were two things that caught my eye. Um, one, that there wouldn't be much staff support, uh, for this. Um, one question or, or involvement, it seemed like. Uh, and then two, um, I, it just being the steering group being just twelve to fifteen residents. I'm, I'm wondering where the ownership and governance from the town is here. Um, it seems like we're, I don't know. I feel like there's, there, there may be people missing. That might be on the, on the steering group. That's what I, I could use some help understanding, understanding that. I know there's check-ins. Um, which you modified, I think, the flow chart to have check-ins with select boards involved and stuff like that, but. Um, I'm just wondering about that.
Well, I'll, I'll start answering the question. Um, the steering group is smaller. Um, based on feedback from consultants, that a group bigger than twelve to fifteen people would be really hard for them to get. Good dialogue and feedback from as much. As they would like during the process because they want to work really closely with that steering group. And if it. It's many more people, then the, the conversations be, would be very hard to.
I'm sorry, my question isn't about the number. It's the makeup. There's only residents. I don't see any. Um, any town staff, uh, on, on the steering group.
Yeah.
And that's curious to me.
I, thank you. Um, that's just a typo in the presentation that what we want from the consultant is to, um. Engage with them as they come with our proposals and tell us what they think would make sense for steering group members. In our. Draft list of potential steering group members, we do include businesses, nonprofits.
Yeah.
You know, all of our, our schools that are in town. Um, this is a, a wide net, not just those that happen to pay taxes.
Okay, um, I guess the, the one, I guess Cara, the thing, the, the group that's missing is someone from town staff. I just don't see town staff on the steering group. Is, is it anticipated that there'll be no one from, uh, staff on, on the steering group?
No, we will, um, we will be there and we will, um, be staffing. We, we are, um, as far as our department. Planning on two to three full-time equivalent staff throughout this process. You know, people might come and go, but that is what we are building into our department.
Okay.
Plan. That is different from making decisions or telling the consultant what the community feels. So we will be. Fully staffing this effort. What we are messaging though, to the consultant community is do not rely on us for any tasks. So in some communities.
Okay.
That, for example, want to try to do a plan for fifty thousand dollars. Um, they will heavily rely on internal staff to do all the communications. To answer any questions that come from community members. And we want that to be on the consultant's outreach group.
Right.
Um, but we are fully expecting that it's in addition to that, going to take a lot of.
Cause the steering, cause the steering group is really a direct, it, it's going to direct the consultant, correct?
The, the steering group is going to, um, answer the consultant's questions that they need in order to move to. The, the steering group is going to um answer the consultant's questions that they need in order to move to the next step.
Okay. And then my second question was related to uh zoning reform. So all of this becomes shelfware uh if we just do a comprehensive plan and then it sits on the shelf, um, which I think maybe is what happened last time. Uh, how, how does this transition into zoning reform um specifically, and how long would it take? Because otherwise, it's just gonna be a document with pretty pictures.
Right. Well, one of the key features that we've requested in, in our RFP is to make a map similar to what we all saw that they did in Somerville, which was to designate parcels for either conservation, transformation, or enhancement. So there's sort of like three levels of directing development into the future. And that is a really good template. If you know the places already identified in your plan where you want to make changes, that's where you focus your zoning reform. So that tells you right away, you know, it kind of eliminates the big open-ended question and tells you where to focus your attention and do scenarios and modeling and testing and making sure that those proposals fit with what we heard from the community in terms of their goals and opportunities.
Am I okay for one more? Stretching myself. So if, so it's two years for the planning.
For the planning process.
And then um I assume there would be some delay. How long would you anticipate before we actually had zoning before town meeting?
Well, we're anticipating that that zoning piece is takes a year, and I wouldn't think there necessarily has to be delay. As a matter of fact, I think there could even be overlap. It's just a matter of being prepared as we wind up. The other important thing about the plan that I want to mention is that a modern feature in the current era is understanding that things are constantly changing. And we've built into the process a way to go back and assess whether we're meeting our goals, what our progress is, whether things have changed so much that we have to rethink pieces of the plan. All of that is also built into this process, which I think really speaks to the prob, you know, addressing this issue that we've had in the past of, you know, a document that sits on a shelf. That's absolutely not what we want to end up with here.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm gonna actually let Mike go next, because this question is relevant to what Paul was just talking about, and mine is a very easy.
So um, I mean, the proposal certainly looks very well prepared. And um, the one thing I'm, I wonder about is actually something that Linda was just talking about. Uh, in, in relation to something that Linda was just talking about, which is that we have a coming to town meeting a, a plan for a zoning change that's very significant for Harvard Street. Uh, and uh, of course, at this point, we don't know whether or not it will pass, but that there needs to be some melt, if it does, and even if it doesn't, there needs to be some melding uh of an understanding of the impact of the MBTA Communities Act and Brookline's response to it, whatever that response may be uh in the comprehensive plan. And um, there's no reference at all to the term form-based zoning, doesn't appear in there, the term Harvard Street. Uh, I think appears once in reference to, once or twice in reference to something entirely different. So um, I, I would just like to see a little bit more uh specificity in there so that whoever gets into this understands what they're, that, that we have this issue, whether we resolve it in November or we resolve it at some other time.
I think Chaz wanted to.
Um, I was just gonna, um, I appreciate Mike's comment, and I think those kinds of flags are what we will do in the RFP in the consultant interviews when people respond to the proposals. Of course, we want our consultants to be successful. Even if we want people to think big picture and long-term, we know that the community is gonna be on the heels of whatever happens at Fall Town Meeting. So that's um, that's definitely true. In addition to what's happening at Fall Town Meeting, we have major pieces that are moving out throughout town departments, like the Urban Forestry Master Plan, like the Housing Production Plan. Um, these are, you know, pieces of town governance are moving forward. We also know, and we've had a lot of conversation about this, that the community is gonna continue to change, independent of whether we make any local zoning changes. Um, as big as that feels right this second, when we think about the long-term, we are um looking for demographic changes that are happening regionally, external pressures and an external migration patterns, um, what our housing stock is, how those um blend together. So there's really large forces that are happening too and that we could take advantage of in Brookline, and we will need to bring the community along and educate and move forward from, you know, what the last big local issue was. But um, for purpose of the consultants, we obviously need to flag this as this is what you're getting into, this is where the community is at of the, of those that are the most engaged. That's definitely gonna be in mind.
Okay, I appreciate the, uh, the answer. I will say that if uh, what, well, whatever we do with regard to the um MBTA Communities Act, but especially if we pass uh the changes in Harvard Street, it has a very significant impact on what the consultant is, is, is going to be dealing with. Um, I, I want to take an aside and say that on page forty-five of what we have and page seven of the proposal is a really interesting graph that illustrates the bimodal distribution of income in Brookline. Uh, and what we are most concerned about with fixing uh with changes to, to zoning. Um, and you know, the, the basis of our concerns about Harvard Street. So uh, I appreciate seeing that, and I, you may see that data in a different form at, at town meeting. Thank you.
Miriam.
Thank you. Um, I, I agree. I, I love, I'm a huge fan of strategic planning. I, I, I just think otherwise your ship, your ship adrift. Um, so I appreciate it. Mine, my question, I think one was already answered because my question is this for a person, but I, I think I heard you say firms, because this is much too much for one person. So is that just clarifying, we're talking about a firm? So there'll be multiple people. Okay.
Yes.
Um, and the second is, on, on the, the very final page of the, the RFP draft, page twenty-four, you talk about a selection committee. And before you had talked about a steering committee, so I just want to make sure I understand the selection committee is the committee to select the consultant, which is different from the steering committee.
Yes.
So I would just add, when you say a selection committee shall be established by the chief procurement officer, I would just add that little modifier. A selection committee to choose the consultant, just to make it clear, because I
Yes.
reading it real fast now, then all of a sudden that became very confused. Alright, thank you. See, I told you mine was easy.
It was. Thanks, Karen.
Okay, I would like to uh make a comment. It's going down a little different road. Uh, let me preface my comment by saying that I think this RFR is very good and important for long-term uh sustainable interests of, of the town of Brookline. I'd also want to comment to town administrator here and town council out there that I've given some thought to your legal concerns uh in making this comment, but I'm gonna say, make it anyway. So uh, it's regarding staffing and diversity. Yeah, I want to emphasize like I always have that with respect to all of our procurements, I'm interested in the diversity of the staffing of the contractor here, the lead consultant. In addition, in addition to any um DBE co-consultants or subcontractors. And I hope that the selection committee will address that concern as appropriate. Um, it's not just, you know, that we go out and find some minority contractors to make us look good, but that the consultant themselves have to look good. I know that uh Dave Jenin-Cockes and other town staff address these issues in their procurements, and, and I appreciate that. Uh, and I think this, it always has to be emphasized. And one of the reasons for this, in connection with this RFR, is to be able to uh confidently, right, confidently implement the required equity and inclusion approach by the consultant. Its staff has to have the type of diversity of perspectives, um, experiences, et cetera, that will enable them to actually implement that approach. So I, I think everyone agrees with me. Just want to put it on the record that that is important uh to me, and I think to a lot of people uh in the sound, including staff, so.
Emily?
We agree. We agree. Well, there is, there, there is an item in the evaluation criteria that speaks to this very issue. It's both their proposal for how to it do a diversified engagement and keep in mind equity and inclusion throughout the process, but also something, there is a, an item in the selection process about how diverse is the consultant team that is going to be working on this. So yeah, we're very conscious of that. We appreciate your comment.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I interpreted that as meaning team, meaning the consultant plus any co-consultants or subcontractors. I think you're saying that, that really refers to the consultant itself.
I'm not quite sure what to say about that. I think it's, I think it's true. I, I think it's gonna depend on the kind of responses that we get. I think we want to make sure that the, you know, the staffing reflects that diversity. Whether it's gonna be the core principles of a firm that's, you know, done fifteen of these throughout the country and have been established for fifty years, I don't know. I can't, I can't, I can't promise that, I don't think. But I hear what your desire is, and I understand why you feel it's really important, and I understand how that is gonna help them be authentic in their work. So.
And I don't expect that, you know, we're necessarily gonna have the perfect team, but
Right.
you know, the message should go out that that is important and why it's important.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, John.
Um, just want to thank uh Emily, especially for the presentation. I do serve on this committee. It's, it's been a pleasure to serve on this committee, and I just want to cite um who the other members of the committee are. I know a couple of them have already been mentioned, but I'll go through the list. Uh, because um, just about every me, meeting has been attended by uh all, if not, I mean, almost all, if not all of the members of this committee, and, and there's a lot of really strong people on it in terms of their background, in terms of their community commitment, in terms of their ability to kind of take on a task and then um see it through to completion, which is what, what we're looking at tonight, and that's this um request for proposals. So it's Carla Venka, Jennifer Sullivan, Felina Robinson, um Susan Podziba, who you heard mentioned already, Jonathan Klein, uh myself, uh Alden Rain, uh and then Linda, who you also heard from today, tonight, uh and then Abigail Hiller. So um congratulations.
Mark Zerillo. Mark Zerillo.
And Mark Zerillo. Uh, we gotta put him on the website, because his, his name is missing from the website. The, the, this is, is a, um, just a step um in a much longer process. And by the way, it, it is not a process of rewriting zoning, and, and I only say that because you know, it sounded from a couple of the conversations or questions that were asked tonight, at least one of them that, that that this was perceived as being about zoning. Um, no, it's about planning and it's about um determining what we think the future of Brookline should be. Uh, and I think with this request for a proposal, um, we're gonna go a long way towards um having a, a very well-established process, and I hope a very talented consultant to get us there. Um, that's, that's all I'm gonna say tonight.
I have a quick, quick comment, Bernard.
Okay.
Just in, in response to John. So uh as the co-sponsor of the planning article that passed the town meeting overwhelmingly, zoning reform was actually a core part of it. So if this doesn't lead to some zoning reform, we'll just have a vision without execution.
Well, I put the emphasis on part.
What's that?
It's part.
It's part.
It is part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, Davis Path Footbridge Concept Design Funding Application and Contract Amendment. Uh, who do we have to discuss this?
I believe remotely, you have the commissioner.
Hello, Commissioner.
Good evening, and as the rest of our team is uh joining us uh for the presentation, uh I will get started. So we're pleased to be here this evening to discuss the Davis Path Footbridge project with you. As you were, the select board awarded this uh project ARPA funding to initiate a design review process, develop a conceptual plan, and ultimately complete the design engineering bid documents for a bridge replacement project so that we would have a shovel-ready uh project uh moving forward. Uh, this evening, we're gonna review the project background. And I think we can go right into um the next slide, please. Okay, great, thank you. Project background, we're gonna provide context for those who are new to the project, uh share the public process and significant support uh that we have for the replacement, present the conceptual plan that's approved by the design review committee, outline next steps, and request us vote to support the conceptual plan, authorize the town to submit a reconnecting communities federal grant, and also authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town, and authorize an extra work order using existing funds to move us through final design. So uh the team uh that we have here this evening includes uh Robert King. He is our Director of Engineering and Transportation. Uh, Bill Smith is the project engineer. Uh, as you know, uh, we celebrated the reopening of the Carlton Street Footbridge a week ago that was ably managed by Bill uh for twenty-five years. So what better way to reward his success than with another footbridge project over the T? We're really looking forward to this, and actually, this, this project has had tremendous uh support to date, which has been, uh, which has been great. Uh, and we have our consultant team, uh Scott Schreiber uh from WSP and also Nate Cabral-Curtis uh from WSP. And I think Eddie is on as well. Um, Eddie Padmo de Pietro uh is from Urban Idea Lab. And so uh with that, with this, I know we're a little short on time, I'm gonna hand it right over to Bill.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the project narrative dates back to nineteen eleven, when the footbridge was a centerpiece of a town of Brookline taking for the Walnut Path extension today's Davis Path for the then stated purposes of establishing a connection above the then Boston and Albany Railroad for public convenience and necessity. In that same year, uh town engineer Alexis French designed a reinforced concrete bridge, advanced construction technology for the time, and erected shortly thereafter, providing those stairs only, as shown in the photo, they're dating from nineteen thirty-six. Move the calendar forward to twenty nineteen, uh and DPW undertakes a conditions assessment. During that conditions assessment, critical structural failures were identified at the span, uh which was then deemed unsafe structurally. Uh, in an emergency removal operation coordinated closely with the MBTA, uh the span proper between the abutments was removed in twenty twenty. Residents immediately voiced a sense of loss and disconnection between neighborhoods and public facilities and asked for a replacement. DPW too recognized this key loss to our alternative transportation network and initiatives were, uh, and initiated work to replace uh the bridge, seeking ARPA and CIP funding to develop an accepted concept design and cost estimate. So in this next slide, DPW undertakes drafting a request for proposals, and in so doing, first mapped the footbridge catchment area and identified significant facilities or destinations within that, the context of the bridge, in order to help develop project goals. And I think the project goal is best summarized at the bottom of this slide where uh it reads effectively, "To design a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly bridge that provides a welcoming, safe, equitable, and universally accessible connection between the civic center of Brookline and the neighborhoods, commercial centers, parks, and schools at either side of the MBTA track barrier." Uh, the request for proposals was issued in the winter of twenty twenty and received five remarkably strong responses. Uh, and of those, uh, the team of WSP and Urban Idea Lab, a team of structural engineers and bridge architects was selected to lead the project. In the next slide, we uh, to, to, the, the RFP mapped this quite clearly, but uh, a con, a, a a public, the public design process was to be spearheaded by a design review committee of nine, the composition of which is illustrated on screen, noting uh Dr. Miriam Askanasi uh representing the select board. Additional representatives drawn from uh Brookline Boards and Commissions with jurisdictional or stakeholder interests, uh as well as three uh from neighborhoods at both sides of the tracks. Uh, next slide, please. Then uh we under. Then we undertook the design development process, and I wanted to give a succinct portrayal of the comprehensive process. Just walking briefly through this, we had five DRC meetings. These were launched in the fall of 2022 with a, and at the same time, there was a, a parallel DRC initiative launch for the Ballston Street Playground, so that the bridge, the Davis Path, and the park weren't being conceptualized independently, but their interface and interaction thought comprehensively. There was a sidewalk. We had ongoing coordination with the MBTA, the Mass Elevator Board. And then through the summer, we secure, worked to secure the support of a series of Brookline Boards and Commissions. Next slide. And now I'll turn it over to WSP's Lead Structural Engineer, Scott Schreiber.
Thanks. I'm the, as Bill mentioned, I'm Scott Schreiber. I'm the project manager and lead structural engineer for WSP, which is the engineering consultant. So I'm not going to go through all of these characteristics of this design. Eddie will go through the concept after this, but I want to really just emphasize that, you know, what you can see here and what you will see is that in this design process, we have a few goals that we've been keeping front of mind, and those are really equity, mobility, public safety and connectivity, while also maintaining historic preservation and keeping an eye towards sustainability. So really, those have been our focus with this design. And I'll let Eddie from Urban Idea Lab, the bridge architect, walk you through the concept that we have developed.
Eddie, my name is Eddie Padmo de Putra. I'm, I'm the bridge architect. And I just want to say before anything that this has been such a pleasure working with everybody. It was truly a collaborative process. And we, as a bridge architect, actually look at things more as an urban design opportunity. And as you can see here, the bridge itself is really quite small. What's really challenging is trying to figure out how we can make this, as Scott had said, much more inclusive and accessible to everyone. Next slide. Yes. So in the past, where you can have stairs, which would exclude people with mobility issues, and also exclude bicyclists, you know, it was okay to have it. But in the here and now, we really want to make sure that this connectivity will serve everybody. And by working with everyone, we, we try to make this more like a holistic approach. So it was really important for us to make sure that not only, you know, they're like all in different levels. So how to make sure that that can be connected with not a ramp if possible, but more like a sidewalk in an incline, and how we can engage the park. So the whole thing is, it's designed as a one entity. And, and that was a challenge, but also it was a really good challenge. Next. And here, as you can see, right, it's, is the whole thing is, is about making sure there's a direct connection to the bridge, but also you can, yes, thank you. And you can connect down onto the park itself. But then next to the park, you can have places where you can sit and engage. Like a lot of people are using this for the park for the dog run. And there is not enough places where people can just sit and relax or, or watch a game. So we tried to make sure that this, this enormous shift in level is also can be used as a way to, to enjoy the, the space. Next. And here, unfortunately, the area on the Davis Path itself is really, really tight. So there's no other way here to, to have anything but stairs and elevator. And you can see here that we try to make sure the design is to scale. It's, it fits well within the, the, the neighborhood. And also even though we no longer have ramps, we, we provide a runway where, where you can have a bicycle to go up. And, and basically, yeah, we just, we thought we did great in working with everybody to create this connection that served and be inclusive for all. Thank you.
So that's our design concept at its current level. And we would like to move it far beyond to the 25% level and then beyond that to final design. So to kind of talk about what's involved with that, want to really focus on that the public process has helped us develop this concept, that the five DRC meetings, that the work with the boards, that all of this has led to a concept that really, we believe, works to reflect the community's will and what those goals that we talked about of keeping this universally accessible and contributing to equity. And then moving forward, we can advance the design of the structure itself. We can start, we can work more on what are the best methods for construction in, on especially White Place, a very constrained site, also dealing with the MBTA right of way and their coordination. We can continue to refine our cost estimates and really get some construction scheduling going and getting an idea of how and when this would get built. We'll continue our coordination with the MBTA and really work to refine the interface and how this project interfaces with the residences within neighborhood at White Place and really works with the Boyle Street Playground. Because again, we view this as a holistic use of this area and a connection to be created within a place, not just a structure to drop over the T. So the next slide, please. So part of this is looking for funding and trying to obtain funding for construction of this project. So right now, we are working on an application for the US DOT Reconnecting U.T. Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program that, a grant program is based on funds made available from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill and the Inflation Reduction Act. And really, the aim of that program is improving access, fostering equitable development and restoration. But key to it is restoring communities around transportation facilities that create barriers. So really recreating connections that are interrupted by transportation facilities, which in this case, we are literally trying to bridge over the above-ground MBTA green line. The grant for the, the application for this grant is due on Thursday, September 28th. The awards will be sent out in spring 2024, and funds must be obligated. In this case, the construction bid awarded by the end of the fiscal federal year of September 30th, 2026. So that really sets our bid and construction deadline and schedule. So a bit about what we're actually looking for, for that. So, so to date, there has been the $500,000 design for the concept. And we have an additional amendment, which I'll talk about for a 1.4, and that's a $1.9 million for design. And we are assuming at this point, $11.9 million of total construction cost for $14 million total. So 9 million of that is the construction cost that we have estimated out. And another 2.7 million is contingency or escalation. That includes inflation, because that 9 million is a early 2023 number. And we are looking at a 2026 or later construction start. And inflation, especially in the construction sector, has been large and unpredictable. So that's covering that escalation as well as covering contingencies for additional design issues that come up, surprises and construct, and design, anything else that could happen. So with that total $11.9 million construction cost, it is maximum 80% federal funding, which is a 9.5 million, which is our grant request in this application, which would then require a 2.4 million local match, which is 20%. Along with that today, tonight, we have our final design contract amendment, which is effectively in two parts. We have the proposal from WSP and Urban Idea Lab for final design, which would have milestones at the 75, 100% and PSNE or bid final design packages. Part of that, we'll continue to work with and update the DRC. We'll be working on historical environmental permitting. And we'll really, it'll be continue our coordination with the MBTA and getting their permits. That proposal is for a $1.3 million fixed design fee. And separate, separately within the proposal, as part of the proposed amendment to the contract, is a allowance as needed for up to $97,000. That's focused on the construction funding search and grant applications. Part of that is the application for the reconnecting communities and neighborhoods, the RCN grant that we've been talking about, and that's in progress. And as needed, additional grants could be possible or working through the tip process. Really, it's an allowance for whatever construction or construction funding search or grant applications are going to be needed. So all of that brings us to the timeline and when this could all happen. So we're continuing now to coordinate with the MBTA and assuming based on their acceptance, based on working with them to get the, their buy-in on our concept design and final approval of it, we are, can aim for a winter or spring submission of the 25% design package, which is a formalizing of the concept you see and tying it up with the MBTA's input. Then that would allow us to move towards a 75% in the fall. And then in the winter, we would have a 100% design package. And then we would respond to whatever comments come in, whatever changes are needed from stakeholders in that point for the PSNE or final, the plan specification and estimate submission in spring 2025, which will give us enough, which will allow us to have some room in there to get to a 2026 construction and the 2026 bid, as would be required for this grant application. I think with that, I turn it over to Bill to talk about our request.
All right. I, I think I'd like to open it up to any Q and A. But we, we do have three requests or motions and votes that we will need tonight that were listed on the agenda, and we've projected those same motions and votes here on the screen. But prior to that, i- if anyone does have any questions for the team, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Paul?
Well, I got to ask a question. So I first, thank you for the presentation, very detailed as a, I can see the Carlton Street Footbridge from my home. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. I know how long it took. And it, it really is a tremendous benefit. So I can imagine the folks in the area, what they're waiting for and how they're desiring it. I can understand. But I want to make sure I understand. So we're looking to spend about 1.4 million, I think, in order to design the bridge, the footbridge, which is required in order to make the application for the grant. Is that correct?
We, our grant position will be stronger if we have a final design contract in place. We won't have achieved final design by the time we submit for this grant.
Okay. And then that's really helpful. And then I got two other questions related to that. What is the probability of us being awarded the money? Do we have any sense of probability?
Aaron.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Commissioner of Public Works, these are highly competitive federal grants. This project checks all the boxes. So we think that it is certainly a, a project that is going to be strong in terms of the package itself and broad-based support. But in terms of the probability of, of an award, we do not know that.
Okay, that's helpful. And then is there any sense? It, it, you said the maximum was 80% funding. So our piece would, at this time, your estimate's approximately 2.4. And I asked you about probability, looking at past grants. Do you have a sense of how likely it is that our portion would be 2.4 or could it be 5?
Again, we don't know, because a lot of this will depend on if they're trying to carve up the available money over more projects. We, we don't know what that'll look like.
Okay.
Currently, there is a hold in place in the CIP for the Davis Path Footbridge. And so that right now is what we are looking at, obviously, in terms of being the town's match. So we don't know what percentage of our budget might be awarded if we are selected. But we currently have planned for funding for the board and town meetings consideration in the future, should this or other grant applications not be successful.
Okay, but not up, not up to the full amount of 14 or 15 million?
Not up to the full amount. Yeah, no.
Okay.
And that really, it does not, you know, there's, there's really, really always some type of local match for these grants.
Okay. Yep, I, I would imagine. Okay, I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to understand honestly that the probability of us spending 1.4 and getting, getting funding. That's all.
So, and, and actually, I'm glad, I'm glad that you brought that up again. So that money was already set aside for full design. That the select board set aside ARPA money for us to bring this project through to full design, so that at whatever point in time, it will be a shovel-ready project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the select board? Mike?
Just to comment that we've, I've seen this stuff designed before, previously. Forget this when, but in any case, seen the design before, and it's really quite elegant. I think you've done a wonderful job figuring out how to deal with the slope on the, on the, on, on the Boston Street side and what to do about the others, the, the other side of the, of the bridge. And I wish that it could be, I wish that there was the space to do a slope on both sides, because that would obviously save a great deal of, of cost. But when people look at the number, they say, wow, look at that. That's a huge number. But there's really quite a lot of work that goes into this. And as I say, it's, I think it's a very elegant solution. So thank you.
Okay, you mentioned a couple of votes that the select board has to take.
We do have three that we propose. One is, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask you what they were.
The first is the Davis Path, we'd like a motion or vote to endorse the Davis Path Footbridge Concept Design developed by DPW, the Design Review Committee, and the consultant team. The second would be related to the reconnecting communities and neighborhoods construction funding application. We'd like a motion and vote to authorize the select board and/or town administrator to provide a letter of support and serve as authorized representative for the reconnecting communities grant submission. There are many places to sign as we head into the last minute on Thursday. So i- it would make sense that we can have someone available to, to sign those forms on the part of the town. And the last would be the Amendment 1 to PW 2215 for final design and permitting, as well as the grant writing support.
Okay, I, I guess my question was.
Sure.
The form of our endorsement. So I guess what I could, I can say, does anyone object to endorsing the proposal?
No.
Lovely.
Well.
I better not. I was there for all.
It's the concept design.
Right.
We like to look at.
Okay, you don't have any objection to endorsing. Okay. Endorsing is a strange word for a select board.
Or to support.
Okay. I move approval for supporting and/or endorsing the Davis Path Footbridge Concept Design. It's presented by the Department of Public Works and the contractors, WSP USA Inc. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoia.
Aye.
Miriam Ashanazi.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, question of authorizing the select board chair and/or town administrator to provide a letter of support for the US Department of Transportation, reconnecting communities and neighborhoods. Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Construction Funding Project. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoye.
Aye.
Maryam Ashkanazi.
Aye.
Michael Salmon.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
Chair votes aye too. Finally, question of approving contract amendment number one for final designing slash permitting and construction grant writing with WSP USA, Inc. in the amount of $1,391,595. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mike, John Van Skoye.
Aye.
Maryam Ashkanazi.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I also just want to say I appreciate the work of this extraordinary DPW and consultant team. And we look forward to bringing this to the next, the next stage. So thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, boards and commissions interviews. We have solid waste advisory committee and then one candidate and zero admissions advisory board. We have two candidates. Let's start off with the solid waste advisory committee. Jerry Lambert, is she either here or on Zoom?
Hi Jerry, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for appearing. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the solid waste advisory board.
Sure. My reasons for applying are my desire to see Brookline reduce their waste stream by 26% with a curd-side composting collection. And I have 35 years of solid waste, being in the solid waste field. I worked for the Department of Environmental Protection many years. I also worked as a consultant. I wrote policy and regulations for transfer stations, waste to energy, recycling. I'm the author of the first solid waste master plan for the state of Massachusetts, which dealt with collection, disposal and landfill capacity analysis that I did. And I'm retired. I'm for five years. I work a lot with the mothers up front. And I also work for the Brookline Food Pantry volunteering. And I would like to see this SWAC committee bring composting to Brookline in the areas of residential apartment building, public housing and senior citizen housing. So. Any questions that you'd like to ask?
I guess I have one question. How did you get the precise 26% reduction in solid waste from compost?
One of the things that I did, yeah, that I did a lot was the analysis of solid waste itself. And so I, I have a pretty good idea of how much household waste is thrown away in general waste that could be composted.
Any other questions from the board?
I mean, I just want to say I'm very impressed with your application. I appreciate you took the time to really write something and that makes it very easy for us. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, good. Well, thank you, Ms. Lambert, and we will, at a future date, make our choice for the solid waste advisory committee.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, great. Next, zero admissions advisory board. Vikram Agarwal, begin with. I see he's in the audience. Please come up to the microphone. Introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in the zero admission, right? Zero emissions advisory board.
Hello, everyone. So Vikram Agarwal, I'm a longtime Brookline resident over 25 years. My current day job, I'm the founder and CEO of a company called Energy Sage. We are the leading marketplace for renewable energy solutions. Solar batteries, heat pumps, electric car chargers, energy efficiency devices, et cetera. So yeah, my interest in serving on the advisory board is to bring my knowledge of this industry and help my town achieve zero, zero emissions.
Great. Any questions? Yes, Maryam.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I love what you're doing. I really appreciate it. My, my first instinct is a concern about conflict of interest.
Sure.
Right? You, you are in the energy business.
Correct.
So can you address that for me, please?
Yeah, I think I, I believe that I don't actually see a conflict of interest because we are a consumer-facing resource. And this is by, this is helping the town think about how do we help our residents reduce their carbon emissions and achieve zero. So I, I think I'm bringing more of an expertise in this space. My background also includes strategy consulting, so helping big groups arrive at very complex decisions. So I think combination of those two, I believe, should be, should be an add, should be valuable to the advisory committee.
I guess I, I don't argue that. You absolutely, without doubt, bring value to the committee and the commission. Or would bring that. What I worry is that, that, you know, you would have to be extremely mindful not to be selling any products that you even remotely touch to the town to use or even to promote to the citizens of the town to use.
Yeah.
So that's where my concern is.
Yeah, I'm pretty very much aware of this. And I think I'm pretty comfortable and able to separate the two. Our business is very large at a national scale. I don't believe it would benefit, it would have any major, any impact on from, any benefit from maybe favoring Brooklyn, favoring Energy Sage in a Brookline situation. I don't think it will have a material impact.
Thank you.
Paul Warren.
Yes, first, thank you for your application and for speaking. I, I had a similar concern. But I, you know, I think, I just want to correct one thing. You know, the vast majority of our carbon emissions are actually from consumers, homeowners. So you know, this is, this is kind of right in your wheelhouse. But putting that aside, you mentioned that you've done some strategy work, strategy consulting. You know, one of the things that we need from ZAB, it's working with, you know, our new director that would eventually be hired is a strategic plan. We need a forward-looking, long-term plan as to how to attain our goals. Could you speak a little bit about how you would contribute to the formation of such a plan and if you have any experience with that?
Yeah, so maybe I don't have specific experience in the government space, but in the private space, I spent about 15 years at a company called Fidelity Investments. And then our last 15 years, I've been entrepreneur and leader of this company, Energy Sage. So within these different roles, I've had significant experience looking at complex problems, breaking down the problems, defining the problems, coming up with strategic alternatives, analyzing them in detail, pros and cons, engaging all the stakeholders, using data and any other input that is required to evaluate the different options and come up with the right and very effective strategy plans. So I believe that experience should come in quite handy from the private sector. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure. Mike.
Yeah, I looked at the website, your firm's website. And I think it's very well put together. I was particularly impressed with the section on electric vehicles because I have some acquaintance and it was really, it was a very good piece of work. And I just want to say, with regard to qualifications, looking at the website, I think will give you, give the rest of you a sense of the kind of depth that that we may get here from, from the applicant. Yeah, yeah, it's impressive.
Great. No, I agree. I, I have a question regarding the fact that ZAB is an advisory board to the select board.
Correct.
Like to get your thoughts on what that means in terms of both ZAB as a board as well as individual members of ZAB like yourself. And in terms of what, what does it mean to be an advisory board to the select board?
Yeah, as my understanding is, I think we are identifying potential opportunities and evaluating those opportunities and making recommendations. I think that's my understanding of the role of the advisory committee. Is that consistent with?
No, that, that's the right answer.
Absolutely.
How, how can you fill that in? I mean, are you comfortable with that, that role?
Correct.
It's a limited role.
Yep.
You know, it really says that the select board will actually implement recommendations as we see fit. Even though you'd be the experts. But.
Yep, I'm not looking for a leadership role. I already have one. This is, this is more of contributing and giving back to the community and leveraging my expertise that I've developed over 30 years. So.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay, we'll be making our decision a few weeks in the future. Sure, a lot of applicants for.
Absolutely, I can imagine.
Maybe say there's, there's seven applicants for two positions, but we're, we're very grateful for your application.
No, absolutely. It was a pleasure speaking with you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next applicant is Lee Berenbaum.
Could you see my note, Devin? He needs to be re-promoted. Hello, my camera's not on. Give me one moment there. All right. Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. Hopefully you're hearing me.
Yes.
Yes.
Please tell us a little bit about why you want to apply.
Absolutely.
That's my door.
Yes, I know.
I, I realized I was starting to answer.
So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to apply and participate on the zero emissions advisory board.
Absolutely. Um, so thank you for the chance to speak tonight and apologies for not being there in person. We recently had a COVID in the household and I'm taking an abundance of caution here. And frankly, an abundance of caution is actually a good answer for why I would like to serve on this board. As a society, we have squandered decades of time for possible action on our climate. And now we're facing some of our last chances to act, no longer to avoid bad outcomes, but to minimize them. Brookline needs an updated climate action plan, a detailed, wonky, policy-heavy climate action plan. Reflects the good work on building codes we've updated recently and outlines the many steps we still need to take to electrify everything and to aid our community in reducing our carbon footprints as home, at home, as we travel and when interacting with our municipal services. I know that many of you know me from town meeting or perhaps from Facebook, where you may have seen my advocate side. Many of you may not be aware of my professional background, working for the federal and state governments on transportation infrastructure, resilience and emergency response. I've been a researcher, a modeler of impacts of infrastructure policy choices on our society, a contract manager of other researchers developing plans for agencies, and a program manager of multimillion-dollar programs devoted to understanding why government actions succeed or fail in their goals. Why do I want to be, serve on the ZAB? The mission of the ZAB is among the most impactful and important goals of our civilization. And I have the right mix of skills, backgrounds and drive to serve our community.
You finished?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions in the select board? John.
Hey Lee, thank you for applying for the position. I can't resist just taking advantage of your interest in this and your experience in this issue, in these issues. What, what would you say needs to be done that isn't being done right now on this front, on this, you know, ambitious goal of actually meeting our targets for climate, addressing the climate crisis?
Absolutely. The, the main things that we are missing right now is the second half on the follow-through. We've done some really strong work on setting ourselves up for some long-term changes, the building codes, our fossil free, various fossil-free warrant articles and the request for home rule petitions from a couple of years, about a year ago now. But there's a lot more to do. We have to think about what we're going to do for existing infrastructure that's here. We have a lot of old housing, which is wonderful housing here. But those folks are not going to be compelled to upgrade and we need to find ways to help encourage that to happen. We need to think about the climate impacts of our zoning policies. We obviously have a lot of discussion about that happening over the next few years. And as we've seen already in town meeting, a lot of conversation about, you know, balancing things like embedded carbon in existing buildings versus the value of added density. And then obviously there's a huge transportation component to this and things that we can do as a town. So yes, that means electric vehicle chargers in a lot of places, but also things like promoting the use of transit. We have direct control over our streets and our design on there. So bus lanes, better street facilities for transit riders, all those things that can help pull people out of vehicle, out of personal vehicles and into shared vehicles, do an awful lot to addressing the climate footprint that each of us have here in town.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I have a couple. I'm sorry. As my, my question to all of the applicants, ZAB is an advisory board. How do you see your role as well as ZAB's in terms of your actions in advising the select board? And I guess the second question I'd like to ask is, you know, we're talking about electrifying, you know, the town in many ways. And we're running into, as I understand, some impediments to that by the nature of our infrastructure. Is that something that ZAB could help the select board understand and figure out solutions around? In your opinion, yeah.
Sure. So in order. So on the first one, one of the great advantages of working in the public sector for, for most of my career and even now at a vendor, working with policymakers at, at public sector agencies is specializing in how to take large amounts of technical information and summarize that for decision-makers. And that can be, you know, appointees, it can be electeds or folks at various levels. So having had that experience of you need to take, you know, becoming an expert on something and writing that 250-page government report that literally nobody other than the sponsor of the report is going to read. And then the 15-page version of it for that person's boss and the two-page version of it for an appointee. And, and then being asked for the one-sentence version of it that goes to the Secretary of Transportation. So that's a skill that I've worked on quite a bit. And as I assume what you're looking for out of here is that you need experts from your civil service staff, from the ZAB as an advisory committee, and then the information that you need in order to prioritize the options that you have and make a final decision, knowledgeable that you got, been, been given the right information to get. And the second question, I, was about the, the constraints on our grid, I believe, was what you were asking about.
Grid and other infrastructural.
Yeah, so we're experiencing pretty viscerally at the moment what a couple of decades of lack of investment in infrastructure and maintenance or repair have done. One of the good things about where we are is there is this need to electrify everything and it's not a problem. That's just Brookline's. It's everyone. So I think that my, my understanding at the moment is there's not a ton that we can do specifically us that is much more of a regional or federal type of thing, but that we need to be an active and loud participant in making that happen. So my application mentioned things like applications for federal grants. So Brookline alone, probably not in a position to move a ton of money to make a lot of infrastructure, excuse me, capacity improvements. But by working with other municipalities in the area, planning organizations and other regional bodies, but potentially the, the ability to have that impact at that regional level where we really need that investment because those lines are coming from, you know, our power source generators all over New England.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you for, for coming before us. You had mentioned at the beginning, you know, most of us know you in your advocacy role, which can be, you know, very passionate. And, you know, it's, I appreciate it to hear some of the policy side. But kind of speaking to, to the advocacy side, you know, this role is, is potentially touches every resident. It touches every business, right? It potentially touches visitors and will certainly touch visitors to Brookline, which, you know, requires that we be open and listen and collaborative and, you know, able to, to, to hear the position, appreciate the position that, that may or may not be your position. And I know that sometimes that, that.
Um, and I know that sometimes that, that, that has been a struggle. Um, how, how would you adjust serving on this board to be able to overcome some of the advocacy history, um, that you've had and, you know, and what that has resulted in?
Right, uh, so we all, in this context, uh, live both political lives and, um, and more down-in-the-weeds policy lives. You know, some of you have run against each other, uh, you know, in elections very recently, and then you sit down and work across the table, um, you know, just, just a couple of days afterwards. Um, and it, it really is the same kind of thing. So, um, yes, it's true that I speak very fervently on, on issues I believe in, um, on social media and elsewhere. Um, it's also true that a lot of the things, um, that I say are things that I think need to be heard, and that's part of being on a committee. But it's also true that I don't, I don't think anyone who's ever sat down and worked with me hasn't found me to be a sincere, willing partner, willing to do the hard work and hash out what's best for the team and the community. Um, and one of the nice things about being on the ZAB, for example, is that you've got a team with a shared goal already. We may have differences about how we're going to get there or the speed. Um, but, you know, this is not a situation of working with, you know, climate denialists, for example, where you, you really have an argument on the basic facts of the case. Um, and that may be the case on certain other issues.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think that, um, this is a, a forward, uh, a community-facing role that has to listen and be patient, uh, and respectful for all opinions, um, and, and take that into consideration in formulating opinions. But I, I thank you for your response.
Uh, I would just add on that, what my other public-facing role, perhaps the folks may in town may know me for, is working as an election warden, um, which is an intrinsically impartial and open role, um, and something that I've spent many years working with the town clerk's office here, uh, doing as well as multiple other municipalities, both in Massachusetts and also in Missouri where I grew up. Um, and, um, uh, it's been something that I've really been passionate about and worked and, and enjoyed. Um, and again, that's one of those things where absolute neutrality and ability to hear everything is an important key, and I've been asked to fill out ballots for people voting for candidates that certainly were not candidates that I would have agreed with, but that is part of the job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there are any other questions, uh, thank you. We will be, uh, deciding on, uh, appointees to the ZAB board, um, at a future meeting. We have I think seven candidates for two positions, so our work is cut out for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am going to take my leave. It's going to take me a tiny bit longer today because I have to swing by the teen center and pick up the teenagers.
Okay.
But I will be on.
More than the public needed to know.
You know, listen.
Yes.
You've got one, you've got one article before that. You've got Article twelve, which is not a public here. That's been withdrawn, yeah.
Right, so you just say that.
Okay.
To the AC subcommittee, thank you for coming. Sorry, I'll see you on Zoom.
Uh, yeah, I actually need more than five, well, five minutes. Yeah. Uh, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Like Alexander Haig said, I'm in charge here.
Yes, was he?
Right.
You don't, you don't really want to make that reference.
I said, as he said, I didn't, there's any substance to it. Okay, so next is, uh, Warren Article twelve, which I understand is, uh, not being moved, so we don't have to, uh, deal with that. Um, so what I'd like to do is take a, uh, five-to-ten-minute break, uh, before we go, come back for the, uh, uh, Warren Art, article hearings. So.
Okay.
Let's start now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so folks know, there'll be presentations first, and then there will be a public hearing. Same public hearing rules apply. You have three minutes. Um, the chairman and their discretion reduce that time based on how many speakers, all that stuff. So we'll see you in about five to ten minutes.
All right, we'll go live in three, two, one.
Good evening, we're back at the Select Board meeting on September 26th. And we're opening up the Joint Public Hearing with the Advisory Committee Subcommittee, Advisory Committee Subcommittee on, what is your Subcommittee?
MBTACA Articles.
Okay, MBTACA Articles.
The ad hoc.
Oh, it's an ad hoc Subcommittee, okay, good, it's good enough. First of all, I'd like to call in David Pollak to open the hearing for his Subcommittee.
So yes, this is a joint simultaneous public hearing of the MBT, the Advisory Committee's ad hoc Subcommittee on the four MBTACA Articles, Articles Three, Four, Five, and Special Town Meeting for Article One. So let me officially open that, I am the Chair of this ad hoc Subcommittee, my name is David Pollak. There are a total of eight Advisory Committee members on this Subcommittee, of which five are present here in the room, that includes Kelly Hardabek, Mark Penzel, Catherine Florio, and Linda Pelkey. And Lee Selwyn, I believe, is also in attendance virtually. And the other two members are Carlos Riduejo and John Doggett. And they can tell me later if they're attending virtually and will.
Lee Selwyn is online?
Minutes. And Lee is online, yes, thank you very much, so that's.
Okay, thank you. To make this discussion a little less complicated and hopefully less protracted, I'd like to ask shortly our Town Administrator to explain the purpose of Article One of Special Town Meeting Number Four, which will be replacing or in Article Three of the original Special Town Meeting to correct some omissions, some omissions in the Harvard Street portion of Warren Article Three. It will have no impact on Warren Articles Four and Five, which relate solely to the multifamily district plan. But I just want to make sure that people are clear as to what the relationship between all these Warren Articles are. We, of course, will not be voting tonight, but we'll discuss the ideas that are presented. We will also take advantage of the unwinding of the process with the Advisory Committee, Advisory Committee Subcommittee, and other boards and commissions. And when we, as a Select Board, will have further discussion before we vote. The plan is that we will take our vote on October 24th, which is before the deadline for the combined reports. In terms of how this hearing is going to progress, we will first hear from Linda Pelkey, did you know that, Linda?
You're up, you're up.
As soon as I finish talking. So we'll first hear from Linda Pelkey, petitioner on Warren Article Five, which is the multifamily district plan with some of her nuance, I believe, right? Then we will hear from Cara Bruton to present the revised so-called consensus plan, which will be presented at the fourth Special Town Meeting as its Warren Article One. Following that, I'd like to give the Select Board the opportunity to ask brief questions of Linda and Cara before we open the public hearing. By brief, I mean clarifying questions, not long statements. This will not, it's not a time for those statements, but you know, clarifying questions. After the public hearing, the Select Board will have an additional opportunity to ask questions or make statements and discuss the Warren Articles in more detail. And I understand that some members of the Advisory Committee Subcommittee would also like to ask questions of staff, which I will allow. But anyway, Town Administrator sort of give, but before we go, David, you had a question?
Yeah, I, did I understand you that Special Town Meeting for Article One is going to be moved in place of Article Three from Special Town Meeting One?
We'll hear in a second.
Yeah, so the current plan on this, so let me just back up so everyone is aware. Right now, believe it or not, for discussion this fall are five different Warren Articles that touch on the MBTA Communities Act in some way. The Select Board proposed four of those five, and here's what they are. Initially, the Select Board proposed and put on the warrant two Warren Articles. One is Warren Article Three, the so-called initial version of the consensus plan. That version of the Warren Article contains a commercial mandate for ground, mandate for ground floor commercial space usage only in the so-called H-MS districts, the Harvard Main Street districts. Those districts do not make up the entirety of the corridor, they just make up a portion thereof, the most dense areas of the corridor. Subsequent to that, there was discussion amongst the community about a question of whether or not that commercial mandate could be expanded outward. One of the intricacies of the town meeting form of government is, if you want to amend a Warren Article, you can do so to reduce its scope, but you can't do so to increase its scope. And so out of an abundance of caution, the Select Board said, well, what we'll do is we will pass another, we will put another Warren Article forward that mandates commercial all along Harvard Street, 100% of Harvard Street, ground floor commercial usage, with the expectation that through the committee process, recommendations will be made to the board for how much of that should be reduced or modified in some way. So there was not an expectation that 100% of Harvard Street be maintained with a ground floor commercial mandate. There was just, they wanted to provide the opportunity for boards and commissions who may be reviewing this to make a recommendation that might be broader than the H-MS districts for ground floor commercial mandated usage. So that was the purpose of that. And the Select Board initially, because the warrant had closed, did so via a Special Town Meeting, calling a new Special Town Meeting, Special Town Meeting Three, and putting one Warren Article on there. However, due to a drafting error, which I totally own, there was a, there was a limitation on there, which we did not intend, which limited the number of districts involved. So we corrected that problem the following week with Special Town Meeting Four. So regular town meetings, especially the initial town meeting, Warren Article Three, with only the H-MS districts, currently the Select Board does not intend to move. Similarly, Special Town Meeting Three, Warren Article One, with a broader commercial mandate, but not 100%, the Select Board does not intend to move. What the Select Board intends to move as a consensus plan article is one article, and it is Special Town Meeting for Warren Article One. Those other articles remain on the warrant, but the Select Board does not intend to move them. The Select Board also proposed a fallback proposal, the so-called M Districts Plus Plan. That is Warren Article Four on the Special Town Meeting One, the main town meeting warrant. The difference between that and the consensus, the warrant, what is now Special Town Meeting Four, Warren Article One, will be detailed in more detail by staff. But the long and the short of it is, it does not include those areas that touch on Harvard Street. It is solely the multifamily districts, the Emerald Isle Special District, the change for the Brookline Housing Authority property on Walnut and High Streets, and certain modifications to the Affordable Housing Code to make it on that front. But that does not touch on any of the modifications for Harvard Street. So the M Districts Plus Plan is a plan that does not include Harvard Street. That is on the warrant as Warren Article Four. So those are the four Select Board Articles. Current position of the Select Board, as I understand it, is that the Select Board's vehicle for this is Warren, Special Town Meeting Four, Warren Article One, as the so-called consensus proposal, and Warren Article Four on the main Special Town Meeting warrant as the fallback plan. Any questions from the Board on that?
And the fallback plan is intended to ensure that we have a plan that Tommy can vote on that complies with the MBTA Communities Act.
That's correct.
And just to be clear, there's also a replica of Article Four, which is Article Five.
Which is Article Five, I want to let petition for Article Five speak for themselves and make sure that they, that we have an understanding on the purpose of that.
So I hope that's clear, as water, not mud. Okay, so let's start off, unless there are any, anything else to add? Start off with Linda Olson Pelkey, discussing Warren Article Five, how it differs, if at all, from other Warren Articles, and for purpose in submitting it, so.
Thank you. Looks like we have the presentation up, okay. My name is Linda Olson Pelkey, I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Seventeen. I'm also on the Advisory Committee, and I was a member of the MBTA Multifamily Permitting Committee. I'm here, oh wait, too early, don't get ahead of me, Devin. I'm here to present Warren Article Five on behalf of the petitioners, which besides myself, includes Susie Roberts, a Precinct Seventeen Town Meeting Member, and Nancy Heller, a Precinct Eight Town Meeting Member. Warren Article Five has been amended to be identical to Warren Article Four as filed. The moderator has ruled that all the changes made were within scope, next slide. So why did we file Article Five? We wanted to make sure that Town Meeting would have an opportunity to debate and vote on the M District Plus proposal as developed by the Multifamily Permitting Committee. It was possible that Warren Article Four might not be moved, or that it may be amended, in which case we thought it might be useful to have an original version. And finally, we thought the explanation, as written by the Chair of the Multifamily Permitting Committee, had a lot of useful information that we wanted Town Meeting Members to have access to. Next slide. The key features of the M District Plus suite of zoning proposals are first and foremost, it's an overlay, meaning that a property owner has the choice to either develop their project under the underlying current zoning, or they can take advantage of the byright site plan review process in the overlay. Those choosing the byright path cannot then go to the ZBA for zoning relief, but rather they either meet the requirements laid out in the site plan and design review standards, or they don't, although we did include an exception to that rule in the case of parking requirements. The M District Plus proposal meets the requirements of the MBTACA easily. The plus part of the M District Plus Plan includes an upzoning for the BHA site at Walnut High and Juniper Streets, and allowing multifamily as part of the Emerald Island overlay.
Excuse me, could we have order in the audience?
And finally, large projects over 30,000 square feet will need to go through the standard design review special permit project process, next slide. That's hard to see. This map gives us some sense of the extent of the areas in the overlay, although we did remove all of the M 1.0 properties, which on this map are shown in pink. So the remaining tan and brown parcels are the areas included in the overlay. Next slide. You are all too familiar with the goals and metrics of the MBTA Community Act requirements. Here in Brookline, we were told that our byright zoning needed to be at least 41 acres, with a density of at least 15 dwelling units per acre, and with a capacity of 6,990 units, next slide. These are the results the committee got back from the state's consultant when we asked them to test our first proposal, which included all of our existing multifamily zoned areas. The results told a powerful story of just how much multifamily we have already zoned for. The original proposed overlay had a capacity of 16,571 units, almost 10,000 more than we needed, covering an area of 334 acres, almost 300 acres larger than it needed to be, which had an average density of 50 units per acre, in contrast to the 15 dwelling units per acre in the requirement. In other words, Brookline vastly exceeds the amount and density of multifamily housing the state is looking for. Next slide. As a result of this first analysis, we were able to pare back the areas included in the overlay, primarily removed the areas zoned M 1.0, because this is where the greatest threats of demolition of house scale buildings would occur. The analysis of this scenario yielded a capacity for 8,182 units, still well above the nearly 7,000 unit capacity we needed, and still with an average density of 50 dwelling units per acre, covering an area of 162 acres. Next slide. In conclusion, I want to suggest a few things we should keep in mind. We do not need to rezone Harvard Street now to achieve compliance with the MBTCA. Brookline's housing stock is already predominantly multifamily and meets the goals of the Act many times over. Passage of the M District Plus Plan gives us the flexibility and time to get it right. The BHA zoning change will lead to an additional 100 to 125 100% affordable units, and the change at Emerald Island could see an additional 100 units there. Brookline has been adding housing. 1,512 units were added between 2010 and 2020, which is a 6% increase. We have an additional 1,325 units already in the pipeline, which have been permitted. We are presenting another 5% increase, including three already permitted 40Bs on Harvard Street. The 40B window is now open, and our planning director says we are likely to get two to six 40B proposals this fall. That could mean an additional 100 or many, many hundreds of units. And finally, we are about to launch our comprehensive planning and zoning reform process that will allow us to have a community dialogue and factual analysis about what we want as a town and what amount and rate of growth is possible and sustainable for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Cara Bruton, or is it Maria Morelli that's going to present?
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
Sorry.
It's not the time for clarifying questions, but I'll give you enough.
Well, okay, sure, but with an overlay district, are we talking about a 50% vote requirement in Town Meeting versus two thirds?
Well, no, we have heard that because of our design guidelines, that someone in the Attorney General's office doesn't think it meets the definition for the Housing Choice Law definition of byright zoning. So we assume it's going to take a two thirds vote.
But if the design guidelines were omitted, then it would be presumably qualified.
It would be a not very desirable warrant article in that.
I appreciate that, that's not, not the question, though.
Technically speaking, maybe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Maria Morelli, good evening.
Good evening. And Devin is pulling up the presentation. I am Maria Morelli, Senior Planner in the Regulatory Division of the Department of Planning and Community Development, and I'm certainly sure. Is this better? Okay, thank you. I'm here with Director Cara Bruton, and we are happy to provide an overview of this Warren Article on behalf of the Select Board, which refers to its preferred plan as a Select Board consensus plan, in that it combines proposals from different community stakeholders, while also meeting the Board's three most important goals for the overall plan, and I'll get to that in the next slide. As the Board knows, the process leading up to the crafting of these zoning amendments involved robust community process. We've had over 40 presentations and workshops, and well over 300 participants at different junctures in this process. And that engagement continues with the Town Meeting process, during which several technically oriented boards will field or schedule hearings and submit reports and recommendations to Town Meeting on a variety of policy areas. The Board's discussion this evening could further support this process by asking land use boards to focus on some of those key questions for their reports to Town Meeting. I refer to Select, if we can go back, I'll just, I had one more slide. Should know the next, the third slide, great. I just wanted to explain what the Select Boards, or remind what the Select Board goals are. There was a directive to staff that, of course, complying with the MBTA Communities Act was imperative, but not merely complying with that statute, not mere paper compliance. There had to be real housing choices to integrate racial and social diversity in Brookline neighborhoods and enhance opportunities for commercial growth. And if you can go to the previous slide, Devin. So what has resulted is a consensus plan that has two parts, and you heard Ms. Pelkey explain essentially the first part. Part one is to create a new overlay district to permit as-of-right development of multifamily dwelling units within some existing multifamily M zoning districts, as well as to amend the Emerald Island Overlay District to incentivize multifamily units. This is separate from the MBTA Communities compliant districts. Third would be to allow for significant new development of affordable units at a Brookline Housing Authority property at Walnut and High, and to amend the Affordable Housing Bylaw, Section 4.08, so that it can be enforced without a special permit. Part two is to create a new zoning district to permit as-of-right of commercial residential and mixed use projects on Harvard Street using a form-based zoning approach. And the rationale for that consensus plan is really to stimulate much-needed new growth, new housing growth at a modest pace, including a wider range of subsidized housing choices spanning very low income to workforce housing. And that's the Harvard Street, Walnut and High, and Emerald Island Overlay districts. That is coupled with the M Districts Overlay, which is a strategy to offer an additional layer of insurance toward compliance, which admittedly is expected to meet the letter of the law, but not produce any new units. To further respond to the Select Board's Directive, Part Two, which focuses on Harvard Street, builds on a 200-page technical study of Harvard Street that commenced before the Communities Act became law. And this important study really identified so many gaps and omissions and liabilities in the current zoning, which do very little to advance the Select Board's goals, very little to support this economic engine, integrate diversity, and offer real housing choices. So because there was a presentation on Part One, I'm going to just focus to stay within six minutes on Part Two, if we could advance to the next slide after this. So the, no, I'm sorry, with the map, thank you. So the logic of the new zoning is to codify Harvard Street's identity as an iconic Main Street district and economic engine with enforceable measurable design standards that prescribe the community's vision. But to do so in a way, we had to test them for physical and financial feasibility, because you're not going to be advancing these important goals if we have really zoning that just looks good on paper. The form-based zoning approach is actually an innovative tool to, as actually a neighborhood conservation tool, and that's really to enable growth while also respecting the existing and surrounding context. This is also great timing, because Main Streets are becoming the new downtowns. Main Streets might actually have an advantage over downtowns because there is less separation of units, which is helpful when there are things in the economy like a pandemic or affecting office space. The less we have separation of uses, the more that we can invest in this economic engine. We do want to emphasize that this plan is very much proactive and not reactive to the MBTA Communities Act. It is a proactive program to invest in the commercial success of Harvard Street, updating the table of uses, which still allows tables and stables and barns as-of-right, yet at the same time reinforcing the historic character of this district by maintaining it at four stories to minimize displacement, setting ground floor standards, active ground floor standards to enhance the pedestrian shopping experience, and devising an innovative ground floor commercial incentive in response to property owners, landlords, who have specifically asked the town for a financial benefit. This is to help them buffer downmarket cycles which severely affect retail, and also to at least address almost yearly tax overrides which pass down to commercial tenants. This is a way to offer, we hope, some competitive terms to attack, attract desirable retail. It's very much a proactive solution to reduce vacancy rates. Mandates do nothing to thwart vacancy rates. So to be clear, this incentive was not a contortion to meet an earlier requirement of the MBTA Communities Act. It was very much a proactive way to invest in this commercial district. So the three zones span from the south, from Station Street all the way up through Coolidge Corner to Vrundale. There are three basic zones, which are the Harvard Street, Main Street Zone, which you see in the dark purple. They span Brookline Village in the south, Coolidge Corner in the center, and JFK Crossing. And they very much encourage active retail uses, like restaurants, where there's a lot of in and out from the public. There is a subzone of that which maintains the same form, building form for that district, but allows, and this is also in response to the community, both active and passive uses. So passive uses could be, you know, a salon or a medical office. The dark pink, and that's the lighter purple. So the pink is what we call that transition zone. It functions to create links between our more well-defined core business. It functions to cur- to create links between our more well-defined core business districts, but it also allows some varied frontage types. So the forms there are also in response to what the community was communicating to us about having a little bit more open space for courtyard seating and so forth. It also varies the retail uses or commercial uses allowed so that we have a healthy mix of local unique shops and larger retail anchors. And then the, the blue is this one piece that we designed. So all of the other zones are really capped at four stories with very rich architectural design standards. But the, the blue is actually to, um, caps tho- that block at two and a half stories. And the reason for that is that we have 19th century house scale buildings, which were former single-family homes, mansions that have been adapted for reuse as multi-unit condos, mostly business with some residential. And the strategy of using the form-based zoning as a preservation tool, capping it at two and a half stories will help deter demolition, um, there. If you could advance to the next slide, thank you. So the consensus plan very much implements town goals, as you can see. Each of these boxes represents some innovation advancing town col- uh, goals. But I think the important message here, it's not just implementing town goals in a very piecemeal fashion. It's integrating them. So what I mean by that is that we have reciprocal benefits. Gains in one policy area do not undermine a policy area. Think of it as strands, you know, interwoven to create a very coherent and strong fabric. So, oh, for example, how, uh, historic preservation has reciprocal benefits to preserve embodied carbon sustainability. It also works to preserve existing housing stock, which keeps more affordable, uh, units in the supply and minimizes displacement.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to say is that ground floor commercial incentive that's so vital to reducing or thwarting rate, vacancy rates is tied to income limits to subsidize workforce housing. We still have to subsidize workforce housing. Um, so overall, we just, this is something to keep in mind as the technical boards uh, do weigh in on one of those boxes or one of those strands to think about not an either or approach, but how does it affect, how does it have a ripple effect in another policy? So we, if we can think about the big picture and the, this coherent fabric. Last slide, please. Again, these are the, the boards that will be taking up this warrant article in the fall. I am available, staff is available to answer any questions, but you might have some very technical questions for which we want to provide a more robust answer. I assure the public and I assure the board that is likely to happen at these individual hearings. So again, it might be helpful if the board were to frame its discussion to offer some advice to our land use boards so that they might focus on particular issues in their reports to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's go on to any clarifying questions from the Select Board and/or the Advisory Committee Subcommittee. Brief clarifying questions before we open the hearing. Paul.
All right, thank you. Uh, I have one for Linda. We're over here. Uh, thank you. So just a, a quick question. So we heard, um, about, you know, public engagement and robust, uh, public engagement. I think the number of, uh, uh, meetings over a period of time with respect to the, the Harvard Street portion of the combined plan, the consensus plan. I know that much of the M District work, which was greatly appreciated, the work that your committee did, was done over the summer. I think I, I sat through several of those meetings and one of them was the public hearing after I think 23,000 postcards were sent out. And what surprised me was that there wasn't a single person that came. Um, and I just wonder why, your thoughts about why that might be? Why did we, why did we get zero?
Yeah, I, I, that's a good question. Uh, it was the summertime. I received a postcard. Uh, the postman dumped it in the combined mail bin in my condominium. So most of the people in my building who were receiving it would have had to look there. Um, people aren't very good about that. Um, I, and the other big difference that I think we have to remember is that the M District Plan is not actually an upzoning. It is not this kind of zoning change that is going to precipitate a lot of new, uh, development and new, and demolition and rebuilding and redevelopment. It's not a urban renewal plan. It's kind of the opposite of that. So I, I think when you convey that message, people are a lot calmer.
Right, but I, I think in fairness, the, the postcard didn't describe, uh, the impact that might, uh, a receiver of the postcard, you know, there wasn't, I don't know, I don't, I forget exactly how it was phrased. I guess my, I'm just wondering, are you concerned at all as an individual who is a strong proponent of robust community engagement? That not a single person showed up at the M District Public Hearing. And I, I don't know what the 23,000, uh, postcard represented for parcels. Um, I'm sure maybe Cara could, knows how that translates, but that's a lot of land coverage. It's a lot of-
Well, there were two kids. I received two postcards. Um, I think you can kind of estimate that we have about 19,000 multifamily units. They're not all in North Brooklyn. So those folks in South Brooklyn didn't receive it. Um, does it concern me? No, because, I mean, I live in this district. I live in an M 1.5 district. My ability, my, my building sits smack dab there. And I know what it would take for that building to be demolished and rebuilt. We are a condominium. It would require 50 unit owners all deciding they wanted to bail on the building at the same time. It's very unlikely to happen.
Right, but a lot of these, a lot of these also include two and three-story buildings, right? Not just condominiums. Kind of, it, it, does it also include, you know, freestanding structures that are not, you know, up 50 units or 60 units?
It's anything that's in the M1 and above districts. So it had to be in a multifamily district.
It could be a three family or a two, two family.
Mm-hmm. Well, there's very few of those, very, very few in the M districts themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Miriam Ashenazi, please. Miriam, I think you're muted. Still muted.
I would just check Miriam to see if you maybe have headphones hooked up if you are on your mobile device.
I was, uh, listening through aids and apparently that doesn't let me. Thank you. So Linda used the term upzoning, but the consensus plan is form zoning. Isn't that correct? Those are, those are, that is a distinction I think we're making. So I just want to make sure we're using the correct terminology. The consensus plan is form zoning, correct?
So, excuse me, this is Maria Morelli. Um, form, form-based zoning is an approach that describes, it's, it's in contrast to conventional zoning, which really uses, um, metrics and separation of uses. Some people will use the term upzoning. Uh, we are very clear about how this plan differs with the existing zoning. So, um, very generally, most of Harvard Street is made up of L, local business districts and G, general business districts, which are respectively the max height is 40 and 45 feet. With older construction, a 40-foot build, a 40-foot tall building is four stories. And with 45-foot tall building, you will get, like you, like you see in Brookline Village with, which actually all of those buildings are non-conforming. They're about 47 feet tall. We love those buildings. Some people call it upzoning, but I want to be clear, we're trying to maintain four stories, getting that retail from the basement, which is really not accessible or, um, even necessarily economically, um, feasible and getting it to the ground level. To do so, it's just a mechanical thing. We have to right, right-size the maximum height. So we're still maintaining four stories, but that overall height is set at 48 feet, which is the lowest we can go with modern construction and a ground floor of 15 feet that is leasable for commercial.
Uh, John?
I, I believe this is a question for Cara, uh, but you know, anybody who can answer it is fine. It was referenced, uh, in Linda's presentation that, uh, we are going to be, uh, briefly, two months, but maybe longer, um, outside the, um, about, below the threshold required for us to, uh, be clear of 40B, um, uh, applications. And, um, I believe at one point you had projected that the period where we would be vulnerable would be September and October. So the first part of the question is, is that still your best guess as to for how long we'll be vulnerable? And the second part of, um, what Linda referenced was that there might be two to six 40B applications during that period. Is that still the, the best guess as to how many applications we're likely to get?
Thank you, John. So my name is Cara Bruton. I'm Director of Planning and Community Development. The, um, 40B window is open now and it could close as soon as next week. So that's where we are as of today in this hour. We are expecting one 40B application that may come in. You all took up the, um, project eligibility letter over in Chestnut Hill, the Holly Sheaf. Um, there is a chance that even that may not be able to be filed, um, because they need to work with the state on getting that letter done before the window closes. The two to six, um, estimate I think was taken a little bit out of context, not by Linda, but by some people in the community. I did talk about how the last time we were under the 40B, that was the experience we saw. That when you dip under, you know, a 40B and a window is open, people are ready and, and ready to go. We're seeing something different this time around. It could be because the interest rates being slightly higher. It could be who knows what the reasons are, but we are not seeing a lineup of people waiting, you know, with a fully ready-to-go application. I have not heard from anybody else except for the one application that you all have seen.
Interesting. Thank you very much.
Michael.
Thanks. Um, to, uh, I don't want to pick on Linda, but, uh, I'm going to. Um, no, you, you know, this isn't an answer for you. Not a question for you, but you mentioned, uh, something on the order of, you use the term urban renewal plan, uh, which, um, you know, the sort of suggesting that there would be, uh, substantial and rapid redevelopment of Harvard Street if the plan passed. And so I'm, it's a question for Maria. How many 40A, that is not 40B, uh, uh, construction projects have, have there been along Harvard Street in the last 20 years or so?
In the last 20 years, there has been one 40A project under zoning for 12 units, which has no affordable housing on site. Um, we are talking about 40Bs. There've been six permitted on Harvard Street in the last seven years, between four and six stories, mostly around five stories. And directly in response to the unworkable, non-functional zoning.
And, um, and if there is, so let's, let's take that and now, now flip that to having functional zoning as you're, uh, as you're describing the form-based zoning. Any sense at all of the level of demand for a level of interest by developers in new construction? What are we, you know, you've seen 40Bs basically one a year, uh, in the last several years. Would you expect a similar, uh, level of, uh, of construction? I realize that there's a housing cycle and so forth, but-
That, that is very, very individual and hard to predict. So I will say that when I did my due diligence and talked to property owners at different places along Harvard Street, keep in mind that there is a lot of retail already in these one-story buildings, but they don't all get the same amount per square foot. Maybe in the core, like in, in Coolidge Corner, there could be a very high, um, you're getting a lot for the commercial and you could be getting maybe close to half that as you get further out from Coolidge Corner. So a four-story, uh, building is not going to tempt someone who is getting, say, $90 a square foot for their commercial to redevelop his four stories. And this is coming from a very prominent property owner in Coolidge Corner, who is, who owns properties elsewhere in Harvard Street, who has said, if you upzone to six stories, I would be tempted. But at four stories, it's not worth, I don't get the return on the investment, so I'm going to keep what I have. And so that's why it's very individual. We, because we are keeping it modestly at four stories, which is about the lowest we can go for economically feasible redevelopment, people will need to decide. If they have successful one and two-story retail, they're not at all going to be tempted. But if they have less, uh, successful retail, this could, this, uh, regulation would not get in the way of their improving their property, which is how zoning should work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Miriam, do you have your hand up again or is? Miriam? Okay, I think that's just a holdover.
No, it's, there's something wrong with my app because it also says my hand is down on my app. So you should feel free to put my hand down, Devin. Sorry.
Okay. Any, uh, clarifying questions from the Advisory Committee Subcommittee? Linda?
Oh, Linda could use the, I'm sorry, could you use the microphone just because folks have, so folks online can hear? Thank you. Here, there's actually one over here for the committee, so you don't have to dance around. Yeah. Thank you.
And you get a chair to go with it.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Linda Olson Pelkey, member of the AC Subcommittee. Um, my question is, what is the definition, um, of active use on the first floor in, that's contained within the Form-Based Zoning Code?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Pelkey. So active ground floor design is illustrated in the zoning, uh, in Chapter 11-5. And what that shows is a certain amount of, first of all, um, I just want to say that if you have ground floor commercial, you are required to have it 60% of the frontage at 30 feet deep. That is the interior. That is not the active ground floor design. That is a definition for, um, requirement for ground floor commercial use. Active, um, ground floor use pertains to the exterior. So we want a certain amount of transparency. We want it to be accessible so that people have, um, don't have, they can access it, um, you know, at grade. As well as we, we do want to give people an option if they have like a true value. We want them to be able to see through and if they have a display, they're not blocking their windows. So essentially, you know, you can see a mix now. If you're walking on Harvard Street, you might have tinted glass, you might have it plastered with signs or you can't see. That is not active ground floor designs. We want you to be able to see in a, in a depth of about at least so many feet into the interior of the space. That is going to be, uh, really enhances the retail experience for shoppers, gets them to stop, browse, um, maybe decide to walk in. Is that helpful?
I appreciate that answer, Marie, but my question was about the actual definition of the use. So, um, does it include daycare centers? Does it include, um, institutional uses? Does it include, you know, what, how are we defining what we think a pub, you know, active first floor? What kind of uses meet that definition?
So Chapter 11-7 indicates those, those uses. So, um, if you want a, a definition, precise definition of commercial, that's in Chapter 11-7.
So it's meant to be defined as commercial?
We use, we use commercial for that act, for that ground floor.
Okay.
Uses that are mandated.
I'll have to take a look at that. Thank you.
Sure.
John?
I, I raised my hand because I, this pertains to what was just being discussed. Cause I thought I heard, uh, mentioned as an example of what is not an active use, nail salons. So, i- did I get that wrong?
No, no, I was just saying that there can be, um, I don't want to, um, confuse people with active ground floor design.
Yeah.
And some uses that are just more active and more impactful. So restaurants are just a little bit more active. There's a lot of going back and forth, um, of the public. There, there are other uses that are just a little bit more private and passive. We're not ruling any of them out.
Okay, that was going to be my follow-up question.
Them out. In fact, we have a very robust table of uses. It's very compact on two pages. And as you can see, it's really everything. see, it's really everything. We do want to have by right certain uses in those core business districts, and other uses can be by special permit. And then you have in other districts, you can have both by as-of right.
So like a nail salon, would that require a special permit for some parts of Harvard Street?
No, I believe that, that is by right.
And I have no explanation for why I'm so interested in nail salons. But it was like, it was the example you cited, so I just went with it.
There will always be nail salons, yes.
Maybe barber shops would be, but even that.
Same problem. Hi, Mark Penzel from the AC Subcommittee. I know, I know now that 100% is mandated to be commercial. There also are still incentives for commercial. Can you explain why that is and how those interact?
That's, that's a great question, because people often think it's either mandates or incentives. So in mandating, obviously, that's, there's a little bit of belt, belt and suspenders. I will say that retail on the ground floor is highest and best use, which means that anyone who is developing on Harvard Street is going to know that retail on the ground floor is going to provide more per square foot than residential or parking. But the mandate is, is further solidifies the town's commitment toward maintaining this as a commercial corridor. Where the incentive comes in, it gives an option for a financial benefit. You don't have to take this incentive. And if you didn't, you provide the ground floor commercial, and because it's tied to inclusionary zoning, the inclusionary zoning, 15% of those units have to be onsite, and they'd have to be at 50% median income for rental. Okay? But if you wanted to go with this incentive where those units could be provided at 80% median income, it's, it's more money for those units. What we're asking you to do is do a basic build-out. It's just what we call that white vanilla box for that first generation ground floor tenant. So it's a way of saying, you know, you are going to benefit from some higher income limits, but in turn, we'd like you to invest part of that into the ground floor commercial in a very permanent way. If you think about it, why is this so important? A first-generation retailer actually pays for that entire build-out. But if the developer could be incentivized to do at least part of it, just the white vanilla box, you know, the plumbing and the electricity, that could save six figures. And it can be a useful way of attracting a local business, a very desirable business. One of the complaints is that it's very expensive to do business in Brookline, and it's very competitive. We're, we're competing with our neighbors in, you know, Boston and Somerville and Cambridge. So it gives, it gives options that, that work in concert with the mandate.
Okay, I'd like to move on to our public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Devin, is there anyone who would like to speak? I'm sure there are plenty.
The first person signed up for public comment is Al Rain. Al, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you very much. I was going to go first. Good evening, everybody. My name is Al Rain. I live at 15 Linden Street. I'm a member of EDAB. I was a member, just completed the Planning Process Study Committee, whose work you endorsed an hour or so ago. I'm on the board of Brookline for Everyone and on the Strategy Team for years in Brookline. I spent the last 30 years of my career advising planning agencies and transit agencies about transit-oriented development. But most of all, for the last 44 years, I've lived in the Harvard Street corridor and have a, have a daily feel for it. My basic point is simple. I very strongly support the consensus warrant article, specifically its current form, in which you intend to move with the special town meeting form. And I, I want to acknowledge and thank the board, the town administrator, and the planning department for their leadership and vision in getting us to this point. I also just want to quickly want to say three specific things that are in this package that I think are on target and that I'm for, and that I know will be the subject of some discussion. One is, I think that the combination of the mandate, to whatever degree it finally calibrated, the ground floor design standards that Maria just described, and the financial incentive, I think that package in its entirety is, is the right way to go. I believe they're reinforcing rather than redundant. And if we want to have a robust, active, continuous commercial world on Harvard Street, along the street and sidewalk, I think that combination, as, as you put it forth, is, is very well taken. Secondly, I very much support the, the feature in which the inclusionary units on Harvard Street have to be onsite. It's, it's a complicated question. It's a question I understand. But I think we have to keep sight of the fact that we're doing this to recognize that Harvard Street is an iconic place in Brookline. It's the main street of the town. Now, I think that if this zoning is successful in outcome, which, which I, over time, which I have no doubt it will be, it's very important to have a diversity of incomes and a diversity of faces on the street. And so I think, I think the policy that you've taken here is the right one. And lastly, I know there's been some, some, some comment out there in the online world.
You have 30 seconds.
Yep, thank you. About the side streets in the Village, Kent and Webster. Those side streets are right on the other side of that wall. I walk through those parking lots every day, finding my way to and from the T. And I think that including those streets in the rezoning is exactly the right thing to do. And if, if that rezoning allows a thoughtful development of commercial or residential or both in that sea of parking lots, I am one of butta who will think that's a terrific outcome. So thank you very much.
The next person signed up for public comment is Katha Sideman. I don't see her with us virtually or in person. The next person signed up for public comment is Roger Blood.
Thank you. Evening. I'm Roger Blood, Chair of the Housing Advisory Board. I want to just share with you briefly a vote that the HAB took at its most recent meeting on September 6th regarding a part of this article, as well as, as well as the whole article. The Housing Advisory Board wholeheartedly supports the consensus proposal of the MBTA Communities Act compliance article, which offers a real opportunity to create more housing and more affordable housing in Brookline. However, the HAB does not support the proposed inclusionary zoning amendment that limits compliance on Harvard Street to only onsite affordable housing in the four to 10-unit projects. This added restriction is likely to discourage, rather than encourage, any small, any small-scale housing development in Harvard Street, including discouraging any new affordable housing project, affordable housing units in smaller projects. Early in '24, the HAB brought a warrant article to town meeting after receiving the unanimous support of both the Select Board and the unanimous support of the Advisory Committee, which substantially restricted the ability of a developer to provide a cash optional payment and substantially increased the requirement for 15% onsite affordable housing. We did that in close consultation with Planning Department staff, knowing what their objectives were in the plan for Harvard Street, and not just compliance with MBTA communities, but also that there would be some real affordable housing development through inclusionary zoning in the corridor. And it was our understanding at the time that we at the HAB had successfully aligned the article that was passed in the spring with the needs and, and vision of the staff to achieve this onsite affordable housing in the corridor. The, the HAB felt, and, and as part of the vote, that for the very smallest projects, that it's not a good policy and creates financial infeasibility actually to require affordable units, and I should say a unit when you're dealing with the smallest projects. It's only a single unit that would be, that would be produced. So what you have is a, a kind of a contradictory.
You have 30 seconds.
Situation if this particular feature is passed, where we will have a requirement for affordable housing in the very small buildings, while knowing that that will be financially infeasible to actually deliver on. So especially where inclusionary zoning now requires an affordable housing contribution, where there's only one, two, or three units total being added, it's, it's almost obvious on the face of it that it's not feasible to produce an affordable housing unit, which costs an average of over $600,000 for one affordable unit with no public subsidy. So the HAB took exception to that, but we, we started by strongly endorsing the, the overall consensus proposal, which is in the warrant article. Thank you.
Next person signed up for public comment is Katha Sideman. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Hi, thank you for finding me. My name is Katha Sideman. I live at 18 Elba Street. I'm a board member of Brookline for Everyone and served on the MBTACA Multifamily Permitting Committee. I'm here today speaking only for myself. Yesterday was Yom Kippur, the most important date in the Hebrew calendar. On that day, we are often reminded of this statement in the Talmud, "You are not obligated to complete the work, but neither are you free to abandon it." Brookline has the opportunity to continue our work of rectifying past injustice by voting for the Select Board's consensus warrant article. Exactly 50 years ago, in 1973, Brookline last overhauled its base zoning regulations. That December, Town Meeting voted to significantly downzone all of Brookline. For example, in the general residence districts afterwards called M districts, the maximum permitted height of 120 feet was lowered, lowered to the current 50 feet, and the maximum floor area ratio of four was reduced to a FAR of 2.5. That change to Brookline's base zoning has blocked meaningful new housing production in Brookline for five long decades, except through 40Bs imposed on Brookline by state law. It's important to understand what was happening beyond Brookline around the time Town Meeting voted to significantly restrict new development. A decade of sometimes violent civil rights and anti-war protests, two years earlier, the NAACP sued the Boston School Committee because it refused to desegregate Boston schools, and just six months later, Judge Garrity ruled that the Boston schools were unconstitutionally segregated. While the folks who downzoned Brookline in 1973 did not draw a race-based red line around Brookline, they clearly wanted to make it difficult for anyone new to move into this community. I'm an artist and a production designer for television, which gives me a particular appreciation of how buildings and urban design tell a story. And I've learned enough about zoning to know that regulations defining how people can use their property and what they can build on it tell the story of a community's shared values. Our community should take this historic opportunity to rectify our exclusive past by expanding and reinforcing an important walkable and economically vibrant multifamily neighborhood. I applaud the leadership of the Select Board and the courage of our community has shown in choosing to use innovative regulatory codes to rectify at least a part of Brookline's out-of-date base zoning.
You have 30 seconds.
By passing the MBTACA Consensus Warrant Article, Brookline can begin a long overdue modernization of our zoning bylaws. And I fully support incorporating this template in developing the 21st century values-driven comprehensive plan proposed here tonight that the town will be proud to follow in the coming decades. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Ted Greenwood.
Thank you. My name is Ted Greenwood. I live at 66 Winchester Street in Brookline. I'm a leader in the Greater Boston Interfaith Organization, GBIO, including in its statewide housing justice campaign, and its work in Brookline and other communities to support meaningful zoning reform under the MBTA Communities Act. I am speaking this evening for GBIO and the GBIO Brookline team. GBIO's Brookline members are Boston Worker Circle, St. Paul's Presbyterian Church, Sinai Brookline, Temple Beth Zion, and United Parish Brookline. Another GBIO member, Temple Israel of Boston, where I affiliate, has many members who live in Brookline. We all know that there is an acute housing shortage in the Boston area, including in Brookline, especially an acute shortage of affordable housing. GBIO shares the view that the MBTA Communities Act is an opportunity to take modest steps to ameliorate this shortage, but only if compliance, town by town, is done in a way that will truly lead to additional housing, including affordable housing. We very much want to see that kind of compliance in Brookline, and that is why GBIO supports the Select Board's MBTA Community Act Compliance Consensus Warrant Article. As you know, this warrant article brings together the Planning Department's new Harvard Street form-based zoning work, the MBTA Multifamily Permitting Communities M District overlay, and two other overlay districts. It is a carefully crafted compromise plan that complies with the MBTA Communities Act, would create conditions for at least 500 new housing units in places where such increase is, where such increase in density makes sense, and over time, would contribute to other important needs of the town, including encouraging the availability of more affordable housing, increasing the commercial tax base by requiring and incentivizing more commercial activity on Harvard Street, and strengthening the diversity and vibrancy of Harvard Street. GBIO strongly supports this consensus warrant article. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Jonathan Klein. I don't see him in person or in the attendee list. The next person signed up for public comment is Gary Schiffman.
Devin, Jonathan is in the, he is in the attendee list.
Jonathan, will you raise your hand, please?
Very strange.
I know.
There's Gary.
Yeah, so weird.
So folks, if, if you are online and Devin calls your name, please just raise your hand, use the hand raise feature. There's some issue with Zoom where we are, we have phantom attendees. So please, please raise your hand if Devin calls your name and we can brought you.
Jonathan, your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Hey, I'm glad I'm no longer a phantom, and I'm glad to be here. Thank you for having me. My name is Jonathan Klein. I live at 150 St. Paul Street in a, in 1.5 district. I am a member in support of many organizations, including a proud member of Temple Beth Zion and GBIO, the, the, Brookline for Everyone, and yes, in Brookline. I was on the Planning Process Study Committee that you heard a presentation from earlier tonight and enjoyed my work there. And I'm also a member of the Housing Advisory Board. That said, I speak only for myself tonight. I have five points. I will try and keep it brief because I know you have many people to hear from. Number one, thank you to the Planning Department, to Maria and Cara in particular, and to the Select Board for your really incredible work on this. I know you've been working for a long time, over two years on the multifamily housing study. You've been engaged intensely for six-plus months with many, many community meetings. I think you have come up with a thoughtful, useful, and important plan, and I appreciate all the work and thought and energy and effort that have gone into it. Number two, we need more housing, and we need a thriving commercial district. These are obvious. We have a housing crisis. We have a commercial district that is doing okay and needs to do better. We have a really historic opportunity here to address both of those things. Number three, and thanks to Katha for highlighting this, we really need to resist, resist, I'm sorry, reverse the last 50 years of, of failure to increase our housing stock. We downzoned in 1973, 50 years ago, and since then, there's been very little multifamily housing development here. Yes, we have a lot. No, we don't have enough, and we decided to stop. And it's time to start again. It's time to reverse that history and to begin to allow the possibility of building more multifamily housing for families at all income points and of all, of all types, of all races, to encourage diversity. at all income points and of all, uh, uh, of, of all types, of all races, to encourage diversity of both income and, and of every other sort. Number four, the suggestion that we wait for the comprehensive plan, which is going to be at best three to five years before we start attacking this, I think is mistaken. We have a climate crisis now. We have a housing crisis now. I understand the importance of planning. I support planning. We've done a lot of planning that has gone into this. We need to follow that planning now and, 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 not but, and continue to do comprehensive planning for the future of the community. I support.
You have thirty seconds.
That's great. My last point. The time to act is now. We have a state mandate to do something, and I would say to do something meaningful. And I believe that the M-zone proposal on its own is not going to be meaningful because it's not going to produce meaningful housing. We have a carefully thought-through proposal that has been carefully worked out. We have had a lot of community engagement and it is time to say yes. So I would urge the Select Board and the AC Ad hoc Advisory Committee to approve the consensus warrant article and move it forward to town meeting. Thank you for your time.
The next person signed up for public comment is Gary Schiffman. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video. Your three minutes will begin.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh, I'm Gary Schiffman. I live at eighty-one Vernandale Street. And I want to express appreciation to the Select Board and to the Planning Department. I speak in strong support of the consensus plan for coming into compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. The MBTA Act, as you know, addresses a local version of our national crisis, which is a shorting of housing, particularly in places where the jobs are. There are jobs in the metro Boston area, and so the opportunity for young people to start their lives and build their families, but only if they have affordable places to live. Our current rules make it hard to build new housing. We need to make it easier. But I do understand the reluctance of some of my neighbors. After twenty-one years as a renter in Brooklyn, Brookline, I'm about to become a homeowner here. I'm going to liquidate my life savings to do it, but I think it's worth it. My wife grew up here and so did my two children. I worked for the Brookline Public Schools for seventeen years, which educated all three of them. I've been able to live on Verndale Street since two thousand and two because my wife's family, immigrants from China, bought a house here on Verndale Street, this house, the one I'm speaking to you from, in nineteen seventy, notably before the nineteen seventy-three change in zoning. They bought this house with help from the town for less than a hundred thousand dollars. You can check it on Zillow. It's no longer a hundred thousand dollars. Neither of my wife's parents attended college, but all five of their children did. My wife has a doctorate. Imagine that. Brookline was a place where people on a modest income could buy a home, raise a family, build a life, and become valued members of the community. Obviously, as homeowners, it will be our interest, my wife and I, to maximize the value of our investment. The best way for us to do that superficially is to retain restrictive zoning. That would make our valuable house even more valuable. But that is emphatically not what we want. We want the Brookline that welcomed my in-laws and that made our story possible. We are property-wise, uh, in a position to support drawing up the drawbridge. We don't want the drawbridge. We want the drawbridge down so that other people's children, people who are not represented here now, who don't vote for school committee, for a select board or town meeting, we want their children have an opportunity to build the kinds of lives that my in-laws built for themselves, and that we hope to continue. By the way, when our house was built, this was from the eighteen eighties, but whenever your house, your condo, your apartment was built, somebody complained that it blocked their view or that it would crowd the streets or that it would make the town less familiar and less pleasant than the one they grew up in. That's.
You have thirty seconds.
The answer cannot be to keep things the way they were. The jobs are here, the lives are here, waiting to be built, and we can make them accessible again. We really can. Living densely is ecologically efficient, it's culturally rich, it's economically productive, and it's just plain fair. And we want to pay the price financially so that I can live in that town. I really thank you all, all of you who worked on this project. I'm really impressed and really proud to be a member of the Brookline community. Thank you.
Next person for public comment is Thomas Levinson. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. Um, my name is Tom Levinson. I'm a third-generation Brooklynite. My grandfather Max was one of the co-founders of that jewel of Harvard Street, the Coolidge Corner Theater. To begin, just thanks to the Select Board and the Planning Board for the leadership on this, on this crucial issue. I'm speaking in strong support of the most expansive option for Brookline, the STM four version of the consensus warrant article. I'd like to make three quick points to explain that support. First, the M district-only proposals are in practical terms NIMBY options, offering Potemkin compliance with the MBTCA, not real compliance. As Linda Pelkey confirmed in her presentation and, and responses tonight, the compliance promised in the M districts isn't almost entirely pro forma, highly likely lead to little or no new, little or, um, or no, uh, new housing. I think Brookline is better than a pro forma compliance would suggest we are. And as I'd like to argue in a moment, I believe our town needs more than such a constrained plan moving forward. Second, I agree with all those who've spoken that there is a moral obligation to do better, social justice, climate justice. And as I've been thinking about in the wake of yesterday's Yom Kippur, the obligation expressed in many religious traditions to care for the stranger all impel us towards creating as much possibility for new housing in our town as we can. Lots of people have made this point. I won't go on and on about it. My last point is also been partly covered, but I want to really emphasize it. I urge on the Select Board and my fellow Brooklynites the practical urgency behind creating conditions for more housing and commercial development in our, um, bluntly, we need the money, the property and commercial taxes that will flow from the new building in town, especially after the last several decades of very sluggish development. The Brookline we want is more expensive than our current revenue they, uh, tax base will support, which is why we keep voting on tax overrides. The schools, the services, the government we want can only be sustained if we have the revenue to do so, and right now we don't on regular basis. If we make it possible to build more homes, thus enabling new families to live here and use the town's businesses, which would then support more businesses to serve that more vibrant town, if we do that, then we have a chance to preserve what we love about Brookline while doing good, achieving social justice ends. That's a win-win to me. If we miss that opportunity, if we don't create the conditions for new housing and new commercial enterprise, I fear the result will not be the preservation of some imagined ideal town of the past, but the erosion of the economic base and the quality of life in our real Brookline as it and we navigate the next, uh, decades.
You have thirty seconds.
So yes, to STM four, which is another way of saying, once again, thanks to the Select Board for their leadership in this process and for giving us this forum to discuss Brookline's future. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Marty Rosenthal. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable. Your three minutes will begin. Hi Marty. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video and your three minutes will begin.
All right, I think I got it. After, uh, three or four years, I'm still, uh, figuring out how to unmute myself. So I'm Marty Rosenthal, a former Select Board member, precinct nine lifer, and forty-five years a town meeting member, and last spring, a warrant, uh, twenty-four petitioner. Uh, I've been to numerous Select Board meetings opposing the Harvard Street Plan, and I'm only going to breeze through some of my earlier thoughts. Uh, more are available on request. I'm sure I'll be flooded with those requests. Everyone knows I'm often verbose, often too verbose, but I could stop here at three or five words. It's either what's the rush or what the hell is the rush? I'll elaborate first on the consensus proposal, which is at best an aspirational consensus. And it includes two or three warrant explanation references to form-based zoning, taking the vision that the community desires. I don't buy that. Paul's question earlier was spot on. How much does the community really know about the details of this plan? How many have heard the view of some people that form-based zoning is a helpful tool, which I would call just an aesthetic tool, but it's at odds with what I call human-based zoning? I share the great concerns and the details by Jonathan Davis about the existing and walkable one hundred twenty-six mom and pop, pop businesses that thousands of people patronize, even thousands of Brookline people. Yes, there've been Herculean meetings and Herculean work by Maria. I, I appreciated all that, but they have basically ignored this issue that the proposal incentivizes tearing down one- and two-story businesses. And how many of those business owners know about this? How many of their consumers know about this? If you look at the explanation for the warrant article, pages twenty-three and twenty-five, there's almost zero attention to this issue, just some generalities that four-story buildings will not, uh, incentivize tearing down these businesses. So, um, what I want to get back to is exactly what I would have liked, and it hasn't happened, and I think time should be taken to do it, is really clear notice, unlike what Paul was talking about earlier, the postcard, but a clear notice about exactly what's being proposed. It should go to every business owner. They should be able to give it to their patrons. And what about the residents who are on the buffer zones of these, of this proposal?
You have thirty seconds.
On residential streets, like I looked at one of the beautiful buildings, one door in on Naples Road. I don't know who owns it and what they would want to do, but those people should also be advised what's going on here to get real community feedback. And what kind of notice has been given to them? What reasons are we getting why the, the owners say that, don't worry about this, or why the Planning Department says it? And how is that being publicized? I think we should all have access to those kind of questions and those kind of answers. The Harvard Street Plan, Harvard Street is the crown jewel of Brookline's infrastructure.
You've reached three minutes.
Okay, since the plan is mostly to accommodate luxury housing, again, as I said, what's the rush? Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Richard Benka. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Dick Benka, town meeting member, precinct fourteen. I also chaired the committee that developed the M District Plus Plan that is part of the consensus plan. But my comments today focus on the Harvard Street portion of the consensus plan. I speak solely for myself because the committee did not consider the Harvard Street Plan. Some issues that require some consideration. While effective building heights along Harvard Street will be increased from one or two stories to four stories or fifty-eight feet with rooftop units, the rear yard setbacks to abutting residential districts are reduced from thirty feet or in some cases even more to five or ten feet. The Harvard Street Plan also includes properties on some side streets of budding residential neighborhoods. Here, the plan provides for building heights again of fifty-eight feet, but with no side yard setbacks at all. A three hundred and fifty thousand dollar study of parking needs and availability for Coolidge Corner and JFK Crossing and a study of merchant parking needs in Brookline Village would be circumvented. Basically, along the entire Harvard Street commercial corridor, virtually no parking would be required for commercial uses, and there would be a significant reduction in residential parking requirements. Such changes would be made with no apparent analysis of the long-term impact on commercial activity. Conversely, revenue generating hotels would be made infeasible by unwarranted parking demands. Going on, there is no apparent analysis of the adequacy of the first-floor space required to be dedicated to commercial uses. Incentives for first-floor commercial build-outs are designed to encourage workforce housing, but the bylaw as drafted explicitly limits the standards that are to be developed to the physical requirements and specifications of plain vanilla commercial build-outs with no obvious effort to target uses that will in fact enhance activity on the street. Finally, there is no analysis of when or where the estimated eight hundred units on Harvard Street will be built, and there's been no apparent planning for the town and school services that would be needed by those eight hundred units, the five hundred units already approved for the area, or any anticipated expansion of commercial activity.
You have thirty seconds.
Including services as diverse as public parking on the one hand, or parks and playgrounds on the other. And finally, there is a disparate impact that somehow distinguishes between for-profit and secular places of assembly and educational facilities that have no minimal parking requirements, while parking requirements are imposed on religious institutions and religious and nonprofit educational facilities. Put simply, the Harvard Street Plan simply requires some additional, more thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Peter Defabak.
Hi, hi. My name is Peter Defabak, and I live at twelve forty-seven Beacon Street, so not quite in the Harvard Street zone, but very close. I spend a lot of time walking down Harvard Street, and I wish it were more vibrant. And I currently, I'm, I have almost thirty, which is getting old, and I have four roommates, and I would like to maybe move that down to one roommate or get a place of my own. But, uh, I cannot afford that. And the reason I cannot afford that is due to the drastic lack of supply in housing, of housing in Brookline. And I would really like to increase amount of housing in Brookline. And the way to do that is to, uh, allow for more units to be built, so I, um, emphatically support the consensus warrant article, um, to help us comply with the MBTA Communities Act. Thank you.
At this time, there are approximately eight, uh, members of the public in person and forty-two joining us virtually. If there are attendees joining us virtually who would like to make a public comment, please use the hand raise feature or the Q and A feature. I'm promoting Michael Rubenstein. Hi, Michael. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to, uh, take this opportunity, as many others have, um, to thank the, uh, Planning Department, uh, for their work. Um, I'm, my name is Michael Rubenstein. I live at one thirty Willet Road, and I'm a town meeting member in precinct thirteen. Uh, I want to voice my support for warrant article one in special town meeting four. Uh, I believe that the Planning Department has made a thorough, considered effort to produce the new Harvard Street zoning bylaws. Uh, and they have considered multiple interrelated factors, addressed the goals laid before them, and integrated the needs of all stakeholders, present and future, into their analysis and output. They deserve our respect, and we should by default accept the trade-offs they have embodied in the warrant article in establishing the best way forward in Brookline. Uh, I also want to commend the Select Board on the process that they have developed, both in directing the Planning Department and in creating the MBTACA Multifamily Permitting Committee. I think that combination has led to an excellent combined consensus plan. I would also just like to, uh, encourage the Select Board to take a look closely at the slide that Maria Morelli had presented with the number of interrelated factors that were considered in the warrant article. I think that the ongoing consideration by both the Select Board and the various committees, uh, including the Land Use Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee, well worth understanding the interrelated factors, uh, both economic and aesthetic, and the factors contributing to the vibrancy and the sustainability of our community. Those are all important considerations. Thank you very much.
At this time, there are forty-two virtual attendees. No one is using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment. Come on up.
There you are.
Sorry about that. I'm, uh,
I'm, uh, I'm gonna be a day late, and I'll show it. I didn't realize that this hearing was taking place, I think until this morning, when I read John Van Scoyac's newsletter. If it wasn't today, it was, was it this morning?
Yeah, yeah.
And then I also didn't even pay serious attention to this whole project. I mean, serious, Mike Samuel called me and asked for my opinion, I think it might have been two days ago. And it was at that point, I mean, I kind of knew it was coming, but I didn't read verbatim what was in the warrant article. I'm gonna come back to you. I'm concerned. I think that we need a whole affirmative action, social justice component to this, to the, to town meeting that's coming up, and also this warrant article. Okay, in terms of how you are going to deal with black and brown people from the, the ground floor. I live at one sixteen, one fifteen Tappan Street. I watched the high school, the science wing, and the, the freshman campus built. One black person in maybe three years I saw working on that project. Unacceptable, and we allow it to happen. You, the select board, allow it to happen. It's sick. And I don't want it to happen this call. I won't let it happen. I'll pull a Mel King and lay in front of the trucks.
At this time, there are forty-two virtual attendees and approximately eight in person. It appears no one would like to make.
Okay, I'd like to close the hearing now and commence a discussion, a robust but not long discussion by the select board and the advisory committee subcommittee. Starting off with, I think John had his hand up first.
Thanks, Bernard. I just want to point out something and hopefully persuade people not to say in the future that the MBTA-CA Compliance Act, that, excuse me, the multifamily permitting plus part of this compliance is not going to produce any housing, and it's, it's worthless. That's a strange thing to be saying if you want Brookline to be found in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. That is the compliance piece of what we're doing. And when you say that, it suggests that we are trying to pull something over on the state, and it suggests that the state would be so gullible that they would accept this as a compliance plan, even though it's going to produce no new housing. I don't understand why you continue to say it at the same time that you quite commendably want to see Brookline be in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. I want Brookline to be in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. And I know that we need to get that part of this through town meeting, or we won't be in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. So if, if you don't agree with my advice on this, fine, but I do hope you'll give some serious thought to, to why you are undermining the one piece of what we're proposing to bring to town meeting that is the compliance part of what we're doing. And furthermore, just to put this on the record, the only known sort of data we have that is based on analysis by our own planning department is that the, this, this multifamily permitting plus piece of our work could in fact produce zero to five hundred units of housing. So I'm not sure what the point is in disparaging it and make it, making it sound like it's, it's of no, of no interest and of no use.
Oh.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the public for coming out. I know it's, it's late, and I want to thank them for their comments before and against. You know, this is part of our, our process of being a town. And I'm going to speak to the process for a moment, because I think there may be a number of people attending from the public that don't really understand where we are. So there is quite a bit of work that is ahead of us. The reason why we have colleagues from, from the advisory committee is that they have a separate process, distinct and separate from the executive of, of, of our government, which is the select board. They're the legislature. And they're going to go through a process of looking at these articles, you know, having meetings, having deliberations, and they may potentially amend them. And, you know, that process will result in something coming back to the select board. The select board will need to figure out what to do with those series of amendments. And my, my hope, my great hope, is that, that we find a way to a path where we can have one motion at town meeting, because I believe multiple motions at town meeting is going to confuse people quite a bit, and it would make for a difficult situation. So that's my hope. And there's a date that our chair put out to us tonight that I think we, that both the select board and our colleagues on advisory need to pay attention to, and that is a plan for us to vote on October twenty-fourth, so that we can have something in the combined reports. And for the public, the combined reports is a document that is this thick, that gets mailed to every town meeting member, that they use to understand and educate themselves on the warrant before they vote. And I just want to encourage the advisory committee, the subcommittee, to, to, I know that you're going to be meeting, David, to develop your schedule, but anything that you can do to compress that schedule so that you can get something back to the select board, I think it would be in everybody's best interest to find a way forward with this. And I know that there's a way forward, because we've received multiple emails, we've got, you know, lots of opinions about stuff. I know that there's a way forward with the consensus plan. That's why we call it the consensus plan. It's a platform for consensus. And I believe that the community and town meeting would be very, very pleased to support an article where we have made rational and thoughtful deliberations and put something before them. So that's my ask, David, that you will take that October twenty-fourth date to heart, give the select board some time to be able to respond to what your committee does and what the select board, the, the full advisory does, so that we can do the work that's important for a town meeting, and that is to give them something clear and feasible for them to understand and debate. Thank you.
You know, I'd like to add something basically in response to what John Van Scoyac mentioned, not in opposition, but just to add to that. You know, the MBTA Communities Act is kind of indifferent to housing. It doesn't really care, just wants capacity. And it's especially indifferent to affordable housing, if not slightly hostile. But the question is whether this town and this select board cares about housing and cares about affordable housing. I think we do. We're sort of stuck in, in a markets, a market system that controls whether your housing development, affordable housing, is going to be commercially viable to those who are, who are, who have the money to build it to a large degree. But, you know, we're working within that context to, to ensure that we have some improvement in both our housing availability as well as affordability. So I think that, you know, what I would, what I would say to, to John is that whether we actually result, what we do results in housing is not a function of what people say disparaging, you know, some of the proposals we have, but what, what we do to ensure that, that, you know, going forward, we do everything to make sure that, you know, through the provisions of the M District Plus, and the plus is really key, we end up with housing and affordable, affordable housing here in Brookline. I'd like to just add that, you know, this, this is really very complicated. Maybe it sounds more complicated than it really is. And, you know, we're going to put together, I don't think it's ready yet, a webpage.
So you're actually going to show it.
Okay. Oh, it's ready. Good. A webpage on, on the town's website with information on the work we're doing around the MBTA Communities Act, both the M District Plus Plan as well as the Harvard Street Plan. And I urge everyone to go to that webpage and, and study it and try to understand, you know, what is, is being proposed and what's going to be presented to town meeting, as well as monitor the evolution of, of these plans as it goes through the various boards and commissions and advisory committee in town before it gets back to the select board for our vote, and then ultimately to town meeting. John, because he's probably going to respond to what I say.
I am, but, but in the funniest of ways. I, I have to say, I think that the sponsors of the MBTA Communities Act in the legislature and the headline writers who have been covering it ever since it was adopted would be pretty surprised to hear it said that it is indifferent to whether new, new units of housing are produced. Every argument that has been made to us is why, as to why we should adopt it, and every headline that has been written on every story that has covered this has defined it as an act that is intended to dramatically increase the supply of housing. So to call, you know, th- this act indifferent to whether new housing is created is kind of shocking to me, but, you know, I can, I can understand how you, you know, you might, in a technical way, interpret it that way, but I certainly don't think that was the intent of the legislature, and that is not how it is being viewed in terms of the debates that are going on in every single MBTA community.
The headlines are one thing and another thing, you know, what, what substance of, of the guidelines are and how they, how they work.
Well, actually, what John raises is very, is a very apt point. The problem with the act is that it is possible to make changes that will allow municipalities to comply on paper without actually making it easier to construct, to construct new housing. I think that Kath Seidman's history of what, what occurred fifty years ago was a very interesting one, because I, I, to be fair to people from fifty years ago in Brookline, while there was a great deal going on around us, one of the, one of the driving forces was that several multi-story, like ten, twelve-story buildings, some of them with questionable architecture were constructed in Brookline. And I won't give anybody any addresses, but I think those of you who have driven along Beacon Street, you know, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. And there was a tremendous backlash to those. And an appropriate backlash, because they really, there was a discussion about the Manhattanization of, of Beacon Street, and it wasn't so far off from reality. So the response was to significantly downzone, but what the effect has been has been to turn Brookline into something like a, a, a landlocked Nantucket, where the, the ability to build new housing and new development is so restricted by this, maybe ossified zoning that we have, that prices only go up by, are forced up by demand by, created by the fact that we are walking distance from the Longwood Medical Area, which is booming. We're surrounded by Boston, by Kendall Square and other areas of Boston that are similarly booming, and we have a wonderful school system and wonderful town services. And, you know, we look at crime statistics, it's, you know, shoplifting in Brookline is the, is the most serious thing that we see. So there's this enormous pressure for living in a place like this, and unless it becomes easier to build new housing, the difficulty of getting in here economically is only going to go up. Brookline has always been a place where people could, who didn't have a lot of capital, could rent good schools. And that, and with rentals going the way they are, that is changing. And a lot of the focus of what we would hope will happen should be on the construction of new rental housing, and I think that's in fact what you will see with mixed-use buildings along, along Harvard Street in order to make it possible once again for people to get into this town to, in effect, rent good schools when they don't have a big down payment available.
Bernard?
Yes, oh, Miriam.
Yeah, my, my comments are going to be extremely short. I'm just going to give you my tagline. It's the right place, it's the right time, and it's the right thing to do. That's it.
Good chat.
So we're going to have this go live on the Select Board's website tomorrow. In the interim, there is a temporary link available at tiny URL. Hold on one second. This, it contains information about all the select board's warrant articles. So it talks about the consensus plan, and it also talks about the fallback option and all the components thereof. For example, we talk about the multifamily overlay district, about how it helps us comply with the MBTA-CA, as John was talking about. It talks about the various different sub options there, about the Walnut and High Street redevelopment of BHA and how much affordable housing that's going to build. It talks about Harvard Street. It talks about the efforts there, and, you know, it has a map so that you can look at this. One of the cool functions here actually is if you click on the map, or if you look on, there's an interactive GIS map that shows both the proposed Harvard Street districts and the proposed multifamily overlay districts on a Google map of Brookline. So you can actually see physically on the map where these things are being proposed. So all of this is available, again, at tinyurl.com/brooklinmbta for tonight. Tomorrow, there will be a permanent link placed on the Brookline.gov, BrooklineMA.gov website. And we welcome your comments and thoughts. One of the aspects of it here is, actually, if you go back here, we're going to have regular news updates, which will include hearings on the, when you know, upcoming events. For example, tomorrow night, the Economic Development Advisory Board will be taking these articles up at 6:00 PM. You can find out more and register for the meeting there. So, and, you know, it talks about how the articles will now go through review and public hearings by various boards and commissions. That's where we are. So this space will be dynamic. It will be updated. We welcome your comments and thoughts on it. The aim here is to provide information, as Bernard said, a kind of effort to make sure that the combined reports are supplemented in plain language, so that people know what they're, what we're talking about, and what, what is being talked about, and not just what is being talked about, but what is changing over time as boards and committees make recommendations to the select board about, and the final version that will be presented to town meeting after that meeting in, later in October.
Bernard?
Yes.
Do we want to hear anything or take any questions from?
No one raised their hand.
Our esteemed guests. No, no, not, David, don't turn around. You guys.
Yeah, you got it. The protocol here is raise your hand. Is that your hand raised, Catherine, or are you just putting it over the edges of the chair?
They want to learn from you. What are you going to say?
So where are we?
I've never heard, I've never heard the advisory committee be silent before.
Just, we did have a meeting at six-thirty down in room one oh three, and we did discuss our schedule and our approach. In terms of our schedule, we're, we're a little, the, we're a little pressed between your staff's needing their R and R and, and, and the, to pressure to get something in front of the select board. So we won't be actually, next week, we're going to be taking up warrant article six, the small zoning change on Mason Terrace, and we'll be waiting until after Indigenous Peoples' Day, when your planning director returns from her well-earned break, and promptly meeting on, starting our meetings on Wednesday, the eleventh. And then what we've budgeted to deal with all of the complexity of this is that we really think that the subcommittee is going to need to meet three times. We're going to organize our content discussions into two evenings. We don't think we can get through all of this in one evening, and then reserve a third evening or a third meeting for, for, for motions and votes. And then the, the leadership of advisory has anticipated that advisory is going to actually need two evenings. And there, they've already published a tentative schedule that runs right up against your twenty-fourth. I think they have two dates penciled in for full advisory that in, that, that, yeah, that are around then. So we'll take all this under advisement, do everything we can to, to get it going. We're also, we've, we've formed a small agenda-ing group of Catherine and Kelly and myself, who are going to sort of organize our agendas and try to sort all the questions in advance. You know, we'll obviously share those in our agenda so that we can be well organized.
You know, we'll obviously share those in our agenda so that we can be well organized. And we're also going to take a a broad-based approach to our reporting and and parcel out the writing assignments across the entire eight members of the committee so that we can promptly get our reports done. And in fact, have a lot of that work seeded in advance so we can quickly, you know, be publish what we conclude.
Right. I I wonder, I just want to get a procedural question out here. There are a number of suggestions for changes in the in in STM one, sorry, STM four, Article One, our article that could be presented as amendments. We have some very detailed comments from Dick Banker and from Brookline by Design. And there's a great deal of good stuff in there. And I wouldn't suggest that all of it should be should be incorporated. But when we, you know, if we do have amendments, what's the proper way of doing this to so that the advisory committee gets the ad hoc committee gets the information about the amendments in time to consider it?
Everything should be sent to me and Lisa Porcher, the administrator for the advisory committee and of course, always can CC Dennis Doughty, the Chair of Advisory.
Yep. And David, of course, you know, we're, I think, four of us have already been on advisory. And so I just, I I don't think the select board would require a full report from the subcommittee in order to be able to, you know, do the work necessary to adjudicate, you know, two different versions. I can see Chaz is waving. So, you know, I I I don't think we need to wait for, you know, the full report. You know, if there's changes that that you're that the subcommittee is recommending and there's, you know, a brief explanation, there'll probably be pretty clear clear as to why they're being done. But anything we can do to compress the time, I think would be really helpful.
And just as a matter of procedure on that, please make sure Melissa Goth is copied as well. She's the keeper of the keeper of our books in terms of, you know, any motions or things that come in. And she is the ultimate keeper of the combined reports that go out. So please just make sure that Melissa is kept in the loop on all that.
I just, in closing, I think we do a great disservice to town meeting. If this, if, you know, some article, if some version of the article is emailed to town meeting that the day before or the night of, you know, this stuff is far too complex.
Yeah.
When is, do we know when Melissa's closing is for the the main body of the combined reports?
I think it's a couple of days after.
Days after that.
Yeah.
We, I have that deadline, end of October. It's towards the end of October. Yeah.
Yeah, it's basically two weeks before town meeting. That's generally the the deadline for the the first round of supplements or the first round of.
Halloween.
Thank you.
Bonus points if you email in costume.
Mike, did you have your hand raised?
No, I'm done.
Anyone else? Okay. There's nothing else on the agenda?
Thank you for having us.
Let us close the meeting.
Thanks for joining.
Thank you.
Thank you.